President.
Councilor Baker. Councilor Bach.
Councilor Bach is actually joining right now, so if you give her a moment.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Councilor Bach, great.
Yes.
Out of breath, but here. Councilor Braden.
Present.
Councilor Campbell.
Present.
Councilor Edwards.
Here.
Councilor Sabi George.
Present.
Councilor Flaherty.
Here.
Councilor Flynn.
Here.
Councilor Janey.
Present.
Councilor Mahia.
Present.
Councilor Romali.
Present.
And Councilor Wu.
Present.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I've been informed by our clerk that a quorum is present. We will open our meeting with the invocation, and I will call Council Mahia up to introduce our clergy. Council Mahia, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Janey, and for hosting. And yeah, I'm very excited to be introducing today's invocation speaker. I met Bishop Borders last year while on the campaign trail, and actually, a year ago this week, I was in his church, Morning Star Baptist Church, when the Matapan Neighborhood Council hosted a hearing. And, I mean, not a hearing, a candidate forum. There was like 15 of us. And he came up to me and told me I did a great job, but he pulled me to the side and told me to sit up straight, to stand firm in my conviction and to walk in my power and to work on my posture. You know, I sometimes, and I know Council Janey always tells me the same thing. And so I was really touched by the fact that, you know, having someone who didn't know me that well to give me such valuable feedback, I was really touched by that. But then I started going to his church and being part of the community. And every time I would go there, I would cry. And it was because my spirit was filled. And I struggled with, you know, going to churches during the campaign trail because I didn't want things to be transactional. But when you find a space where you're completely embraced and you feel like you're at home, it was really welcoming. And I reached out to him in June because I had to make the vote for the budget vote, and my heart was heavy. And I reached out to him, even though we hadn't talked in a while. And I reached out to him for some counsel because I really was, a lot of the suffering was weighing heavy in my heart. And he told me to listen to my heart, to follow, just to follow it and to let that guide me. And he's become a spiritual mentor or guide, if you will. And, you know, I'm an orphan of the spiritual world. I don't have a home church. And he has invited me to become a member of his church. And I am extremely humbled by that invitation and in awe of someone who is so deeply loved in the community and embraced and just really grateful to have the opportunity to bring him into this space as the first person that I invite in my journey here, someone who sees something in me and so many others. And so we're just incredibly grateful for him. I called him as soon as you told me it was my turn. And like, within 20 minutes, I was like, oh, my God, I have to do this. Can you do this? And he said yes. And here we are today. So just wanted to thank Bishop Borders for all that you have done in the city of Boston and your mentoring. And thank you for blessing us today. Thank you. You now have the floor.
Councilwoman President Janey, I honor you. Councilwoman Mahir, God bless you. You are a great soul with a great future and Boston politics. And Madam Chair, City Council, all the individual members of the City Council, who I know and honor and admire and love, please join me in prayer to God. Lord God Almighty, you who through wisdom made the earth and the universe stands according to the counsel of your will. We are but finite beings who gave responsibility, who you gave responsibility to work the earth and care for it. The City Council and all participants, invoke your holy presence in virtual assembly to conduct business for the citizens of Boston. We pray grace and mercy for Mayor Walsh and the entire City Council. Give them ears to hear, eyes to see, and hearts to feel the concerns of Boston's residents. Let no one have advantage over the other. Let no agenda prevail except what advances fairness, equity, and justice for all. We pray for the peace of the city. We pray all your resources, human and divine, will flow into it to secure health and prosperity for the lowest, the least, the lost, the languishing, and the left behind. With the plague of COVID-19 changing our way of life, we ask you for wisdom and guidance about opening the public and private schools, restaurants, arenas, churches, and auditoriums. We pray for healthcare workers and caregivers who fight this epidemic every day. We pray for teachers and parents who need rest, for children who need food, and for public safety and first responders who need strength. We pray you'll hear the cry of the oppressed and break the yoke of the oppressors. Bless today's deliberations, and may we engage in faith and understanding. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much for that inspiring message. I hope you'll join us as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you again, Bishop Borders, for that very inspiring message. Feel free to continue on or to excuse yourself as you see fit.
I must excuse myself. Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you very much again for that very inspiring message and for those prayers. We need it, and I hope you'll continue to pray for us in our city. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you please amend the attendance report to reflect that Councilor Baker has joined us?
Thank you, Madam President.
Wonderful. Now, we'll move on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of our minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. We'll now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor, and we'll start with docket 0909. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading that?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0909, message and order for your approval of proposed ordinance to the purpose to expand the current membership of the Public Improvements Commission, excuse me, for effective management of public rights and ways to enhance public travel, safeguard public safety, filed in the office of the City Clerk on August 17, 2020.
Thank you. Docket 0909 will be referred to the Committee of Government Operations, and we'll move on to docket 0910.
Docket 0910, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an grant for the Massachusetts State Transportation Authority in the amount not to exceed $30 million for costs related to the construction and implementation of dedicated bus lanes and similar bus priority measures in various locations within the city of Boston.
Thank you. Docket 0910 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll move on to docket 0911.
Docket 0911, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant for the coronavirus aid relief and economic security known as CARES Act, awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund subawards to help save jobs in the arts sector and keep doors open to art organizations.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a larger award than I think we would normally want to suspend and pass, but I asked my colleagues if they will help me to suspend and pass. It's like the clerk said, it's $250,000 from the CARES Act Award, awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts, to be administered by Arts and Culture. And this grant would fund subawards that would help save jobs in organizations, keep their doors open. So I would like to suspend and pass this, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Council Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0911. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0911 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read 0912?
Thank you. Message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $106,071 in the form of a grant for FY21 co-response, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund a full-time, master's-level mental health clinician to co, excuse me, to co-respond with offices in the police districts B2 and B3, and a part-time certified PR specialist.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Councilor Campbell. Councilor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0912, pretty self-explanatory. It's a grant in an amount of $106,000, $106,071, and it's to fund a mental health clinician, which of course, we know is critically important, and there aren't enough of them, but to partner with officers in responses to various calls. Lastly, say, there's been advocacy by the council over the years to expand the number of clinicians available, so want to get this funding out to the department as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Councilor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0912. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0912 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0913?
Docket 0913, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Harvard Business School Leadership Fellow Program, awarded by Harvard Business School, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund a fellow for a one-year term with an annualized salary of $100,000.
Thank you so much. The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0913. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0913 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0914.
Docket 0914, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $75,000 in the form of a grant for the 2020 Summer Jobs Fund, awarded by the Harvard University Office of General Counsel, to be administered by the Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund employment and enrichment for Boston youth and community-based organizations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish to suspend the rules and pass this docket 0914. This sum of $75,000 in a grant from Harvard University will support our youth enrichment and community-based organizations working with youth at this very important time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0914. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0914 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0915.
Docket 0915, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an amount, $20,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 artworks awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund technical assistance for community arts and cultural events and projects.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is just short money here, $20,000 artwork awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts, to be administered again by the Office of Arts and Culture. It will give technical assistance to community arts and cultural events and projects. I would like to suspend and pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Council Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0915. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0915 has been passed. Madam Clerk, we'll go on to docket 0916.
Docket 0916, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount, $15,000 in the form of a grant for the Boston Properties Donation, awarded by the donors group, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund repairs and maintenance of the Quest Eternal statue.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This $15,000 will help go to restore and repair. I don't know if people remember the Quest statue outside of the Prudential. It was the guy with one outstretched hand. Pretty interesting statue. We've had, we had, we had some meetings on this before, and the sculpture is set to move over into Liz's district, or to Council Braden's district, into the Smith Playground in Alston. So this will help, you know, move that a little closer to a nice piece of artwork on display again in Brighton. I'm a little bit jealous that Liz, it's going to you. I'd like it to come over here, but good luck to you. Suspend and pass docket 0916. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Council Baker. I'm jealous too. I grew up with that statue, and I was devastated when it disappeared, and nobody said what was going to happen to it.
Well, we were having meetings on it here, Madam President.
You're all just going to have to come and visit me with the statue.
Council Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0916. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0916 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could please read dockets 0917 through 0921. We'll read those together.
Thank you. Docket 0917, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dean Panato as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending July 1, 2021. Docket 0918, message and order for the confirmation and reappointment of Diana Barcon as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2023. Docket 0919, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of David Gori Ducci as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2023. Docket 0920, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dawn Amadio as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2021. Docket number 0921, message and order for confirmation of the reappointment of Felicia Jack as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2023.
Thank you so much. Dockets 0917 through 0921 will be referred to the Committee on Planning and Development and Transportation. Now, we'll move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0922 and 0923 together.
Docket 0922, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 9:00 a.m. on Monday, August 3, 2020, until 8:00 p.m. on Friday, August 7, 2020. Docket 0923, notice received from the auditing department providing the fiscal year 2021 payroll allotment schedule for all city departments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0922 and 0923 will be placed on file. Can you please read docket 0924?
Docket 0924, communication was received from Council President Janey, a letter sent to the mayor regarding a black and brown agenda for Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just to be brief, before this docket gets assigned, wanted to just give a brief update. This docket is referring to the five-page letter that was sent to the mayor two months ago on June 19, which is two months later. And the intent behind this letter, which was a starting point in terms of black and brown agenda, to answer the call of what we can do here in Boston to address systemic racism. And the intent is really to be a living document. And so as items on that agenda move forward, we want to continue to update that letter with the progress that we're making and the progress that we're not making, so that people can follow along. And so I wanted to officially file that today, so it's filed as a part of our public record. But we're also going to find a place for the letter to live if people want to check in and see where we are on those items. There'll be links attached to those items. I just wanted to give a brief update on those items. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for all of your work in terms of this black and brown agenda and the things that we are pushing to make sure that Boston truly is a more just and equitable city. So with that being said, docket 0924 will be placed on file as well. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0925 through 0927?
Thank you. Docket 0925, communication was received from the mayor designating Robert Archangeli Assistant Corporation Counsel of the City of Boston's Law Department to execute post-community agreements and letters of support or non-opposition as may be required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 94G, and the Regulation of the Cannabis Control Commission effective August 17, 2020.
Madam Clerk?
Yep, I'm sorry. And docket number 0927, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on paper to acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of July 29, 2020.
Madam Clerk, did you read docket 0926?
Yes. You want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Docket 0926, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on paper to acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of July 8, 2020.
Thank you so much. Dockets 0925 through 0927 will be placed on file, and we'll go on to docket 0928.
Thank you. Docket 0928, constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer were received. Darren Brown, Marcio Fonseca, Derek Hughes, Melvin Johnson, Tonya Marshall, Cynthia Martinez, Evangeline Maxwell Davis, Sheria McLaughlin, Alexa McNeil, Donna Moore, Gris Malde Nova, Erica Dora, and Israel Timberlake.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Council Campbell. Council Campbell, you have the floor. Council Campbell, are you with us? I'm going to come back to this, Madam Clerk. We'll move on in the agenda until we figure out what is happening there. We'll come back. So this is docket 0928. Just want to put a placeholder here.
I'm here, Madam President. I apologize.
No worries.
Grand's worried. But I'm here. So thank you. Can we, did you move on already, or you want me to?
No, no, no. We can stay here. This is docket 0928.
Yep, that's right.
The clerk just read the names of the.
Thank you.
And so now I'm calling upon you, the Chair.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, and I'll talk about the constables that were recently in a committee for hearing, but these folks go through an extensive process to be approved, a lengthy background check from the police department. And as our clerk knows, they have to post a bond. Her office is intimately involved as well. All these folks have satisfied those conditions. And so at this time, seeking approval of docket 0928 under the usual terms and conditions.
Thank you so much, Council Campbell.
Madam, thank you, Madam President.
Council Campbell seeks passage of docket 0928, and that it ought to be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0928 has been passed. We'll now move on to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0857?
Docket 0857, Committee on Ways and Means, which is referred on July 29, 2020, docket number 0857. Message and order approving the appropriation of $70,057, $7,067 for the purpose of paying for the costs associated with the roof and boiler replacement projects at the following schools: Mary Lion School, McKinley School, the Curly 8, for which the city of Boston may be eligible, for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. The Mr. Report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Bach, the Chair of Ways and Means. Council Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Last Thursday, we held a hearing on this docket, which is about a state grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to support roof and boiler projects at the McKinley School, the Curly K-8, and the Mary Lion. These are projects that would be done under the direction of our Public Facilities Department, and, you know, have been planned in consultation with the Boston Public Schools. And as the council discussed before, in recent years, the administration has really accelerated the number of projects that we have asked the MSBA to help support. So this is an opportunity for them to fund, you know, to half the cost of the project, and it's a way to accelerate our school building, repair, and capital improvements pipeline. So, you know, we submit each year a number of projects to them. I think in the last round, we submitted six, and they picked these three. The committee discussed the fact that ironically, the MSBA decided to, prior to the outbreak of COVID, decided not to accept any window projects in this round. So the only ones that they're funding this year are all roof and boilers, no windows, which, as we all know, you know, there are really serious concerns with ventilation. We discussed that that was unfortunate, but that the school department is going to be accelerating, you know, window improvements across our stock with our own capital money. And that we'll continue to aggressively apply for this funding from the MSBA. There is some concern about the MSBA's funding pipeline over the next few years dwindling just because it's based off of sales tax. And so as long as we're in a recession, that's a concern. However, these projects are already fully funded and approved on their end. And so this order today is for us to, us to front the money on the city side to get these projects going, and then we'll get that reimbursement from the state. We were joined by both Brian McLaughlin, the Director of Capital Planning from BPS, and Nate Cooter, their CFO, and also on the PFD side, Carlton Jones, who's Assistant Director of Operations. We discussed procurement and the importance of building more of a pipeline of minority women-owned business contractors to do these types of projects and strategies for that. And I'm grateful to councilors Flynn, Sabi George, Flaherty, Mahia, and Braden, who joined me for the hearing. It's my recommendation at this time that, as this matter comes before the full council, that it be read for the first time and assigned for further action. Given the fact that it's technically a capital docket, it needs that double vote. So this would be the first one. But that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Council Bach. Having received its first reading, docket 0857 will be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Perfect. Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Arroyo.
Sorry, I have to wait in the restroom. What are we voting on right now?
This is to take this, the School Building Authority. This is to take this, the School Building Authority money from the state.
Okay, yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell? Counselor Campbell. I'll come back to her. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu? Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Thank you. And Counsel Campbell? So, Madam President, docket number 0857 has received its first reading and has been assigned for further action.
Thank you. The report has been accepted, and docket 0857 has been assigned for further action. We will now move on to a bunch of dockets that I'd like you to read together, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0104 through 0253.
Terrific. Thank you. Excellent. Docket 0104, Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 29, 2020. Docket number 0104, message and order for the confirmation and reappointment of Timothy Burke, who is a member of the zoning board of appeals, for term ending July 1, 2021. Submit the report recommending the order ought to be denied without prejudice. Docket 0105, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 29, 2020. Docket number 0105, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ann Beha, who is a member of the zoning board of appeals, for a term ending July 1, 2021. Submit the report recommending the order ought to be denied without prejudice. Docket number 0251, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 29, 2020. Docket 0251, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Constanceius Ligris as a member of the zoning board of appeals, for a term expiring 1st, 2022. Submit the report recommending the order ought to be denied without prejudice. And docket number 0253, Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 29, 2020. Docket number 0251, message and order for the confirmation and appointment of Eric Robinson as a member of the zoning board of appeals, for a term expiring July 1, 2021. Submit the report recommending the order ought to be denied without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Wu, who is Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am grateful to colleagues for showing up in large numbers at our Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee meeting on August 13. This was a very productive conversation, and this committee report comes out of the items that we discussed that day. So just really quickly to review and make sure there's full details and context. At our last Boston City Council meeting, July 29, this council showed real leadership in taking action and advancing the home rule petition for changes to the ZBAA. That change was spearheaded by Council Lady Edwards, and she deserves huge kudos for steering that process over nearly a year of public meetings and working sessions. The changes that we voted on and that the mayor signed would modernize the board, promote transparency, and introduce structural changes to the expertise reflected on the board, specifically adding a requirement for expertise in climate change and environmental protection, as well as in urban planning. These are important, urgent changes, given recent events, given the ongoing federal investigation involving the ZBAA, as well as feedback all over the city from our neighborhoods and our residents that development decisions in the midst of the building boom have not matched the needs of our neighborhoods, short term and long term. These nominations that are before us today include filling a vacancy from the wake of the federal investigation and have been in committee over the last few months as the council has been waiting on reports related to that, as well as the process on the home rule petition, which, again, we voted through last meeting. So first, I wanted to thank all ZBAA members who are sitting on the board now, and everyone who has been willing to put themselves forward to sit on the board. They don't do it for the pay. They don't do it for the glamour. They do extremely, extremely important work. And the very minimal stipend that they receive doesn't come close to covering the number of hours that I know they spend thinking about these cases and weighing in. Their job has been made more difficult during COVID because of the first pause in meetings, and then now a surge of economic activity as reopening has occurred. So there's a large and growing backlog of cases on the ZBAA. The statute allows for, creates seven seats and seven alternates on this board. Four of each category, four board members and four alternates, are nominated by nominating organizations, and three of each are picked at large by the mayor. Currently, there are four board members and three alternates seated, so seven people total, and five are required for quorum. So that means that at this moment, there are three new nominations before us, three new people being nominated, and then four completely open vacancies that the council has not received any nominations for. Today, I'm asking the council to think not about evaluating each individual nominee, but the structure of the ZBAA and its connection to the underlying issues we see across the city, issues of inequity, of disparities that our development process has been exacerbating. And today, I ask us to exercise our oversight authority, as the council has outlined in state statute, to move in the direction of the important structural changes passed last week in a swift timeline. So I want to emphasize that since our committee meeting last Thursday, I've spoken with both nominating organizations involved in this batch of nominees. Both are familiar with the timeline. Both are well-briefed on what is happening. We've received letters from both of them to the entire council. The Greater Boston Real Estate Board does not wish to alter their nominee, is worried about setting precedence of extra requirements, and worried about the council asking additional questions. I have written back to emphasize that our legal basis for this committee report is the wide latitude that the state statute gives the council to vote to confirm or reject nominees. We have unrestricted latitude in our vote today. The Boston Society of Architects has written a letter stating that while they still stand behind their current nominees, they understand that the recommendation is to align the nomination process with the home rule, and they are prepared to present new nominees in this swift timeline that match the types of expertise laid out. Our next meeting as a council is September 16. During that time, the ZBAA only meets one time, because they're also on a reduced summer schedule. So I commit as committee chair to keep working with these organizations, and particularly the BSA, who are committed to going through a process of seeking new nominees that match the types of expertise we're seeking, have a meeting of the committee in between now and September 16 to allow all of us to vet the potential new nominees, and then be prepared to suspend and pass on September 16 city council meeting. So three things about what we're voting on today. First, I'm asking all of us to reject without prejudice. This means that we are clearing the docket to allow for renomination, but any existing nominees could still reapply or be resubmitted without a one-year bar, as would be the case if we were rejecting with prejudice. Second, you'll notice that one of them is staying in committee. That one is the reappointment that is before the council. And when a term expires, that person continues to serve in holdover status, so that member continues to be on the ZBAA, continues to take votes. So we're keeping that one in committee as opposed to rejecting that one without prejudice. And third, just to emphasize why I keep saying there's three new seats, but we're voting on four people today, of these four before us, one has withdrawn from not wishing to be nominated anymore. So again, just clearing the docket there. So I didn't get into individual names, because this is not about the individuals. These are all extremely dedicated Boston residents, hardworking people who would add a lot to the ZBAA. This is about the larger structural issues in this moment that we're in, given the recent history on the board. So I recommend adopting the committee report, which would mean that a yes vote would be to adopt the committee report and reject without prejudice of each nominee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. So we'll vote on each docket separately, and we'll start with docket 0104. And this-- What's that?
You want a roll call vote on each of them, or just voice vote?
Point of clarification, Madam President, or Madam Clerk, point of clarification. So a yes vote, essentially is to deny this application without prejudice. So a yes vote is for denial. A no vote, a no vote would be in favor of this applicant. Would I be--
The yes vote is to support the committee report, which denies without prejudice. If you wanted to oppose that, you'd say no, and therefore it would reject the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Therefore, the recommendation of the committee report, yes. Is everyone clear?
I have an additional question regarding process with this one. So if the vote was to be a no and a rejection of the committee report, where does it stand at that point? For the clerk or for the chair?
Repeat the question, Counselor Sabi George?
So a support of the committee report is a rejection without prejudice, clears the docket from the agenda with a hopeful refile, whatever. But if the committee report was rejected by this body, where then would these dockets exist? What would then be the--
I might suggest they could be referred back to committee for reconsideration?
My concern is that these applicants have not yet been before this body, and I appreciate the chair's report that this isn't about the individual, it's about the larger process. But I do recognize the challenges that the zoning board of appeal has had on large developments and small developments over the last period of time, and that we haven't yet provided any sort of process for the nominees that were placed before us, and consideration given for these nominees actually fulfilling some of our desires around a structured ZBAA. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Thank you so much. And just to clarify, Counsel Wu, you said there are four dockets before us, right?
That's correct.
And three of the four, you want to reject without prejudice, and one, you wanted to do--
Oh--
If you could just clarify which docket you're doing what on, that would be helpful. So on the agenda, the first docket is 0104. What is--
Yes, pardon. Okay, so for dockets number 0104, 0105, 0251, and 0253, the recommendation is to reject without prejudice. And then for 0252, which is a little out of order, that is--
We didn't even read that one in the record yet. So right now, we're just dealing with these four, right?
Okay, perfect. So those are all reject without prejudice.
Yeah.
And Madam President, could I make one point--
Yes.
--to address the important point that Counsel Sabi George brought up, just in terms of consideration of the individuals before us today. So we did scan the resumes and ask for background, and so have very clearly looked at the backgrounds in terms of the written documents presented by the members as they applied. So that's been forwarded out to the council. And while we have not asked people to come in individually, just from a scan of the written materials presented, the first look at what people list on their resumes, that type of expertise is not listed.
Everyone good for the votes? We're going to take the docket separately, and we're going to start with docket 0104. Counsel Wu seeks acceptance of the committee report, recommending that the order ought to be denied without prejudice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
I'm going to ask you to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sure. Docket 0104, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell? Counsel Campbell? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George?
No.
Counsel Sabi George, no. Counsel Flaherty?
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn?
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
No.
Counselor O'Malley, no. Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And once again, Counsel Campbell. So the committee report did pass with, what, three, four, five, seven votes in the affirmative and five votes in the negative.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So docket 0104 has passed. The committee report has been accepted.
Exactly.
So we will now do the same thing for docket 0105. Counsel Wu's acceptance of the committee report, recommending that the order ought to be denied without prejudice. And we'll just do roll call votes. Madam Clerk, if you would?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George?
No.
Counsel Sabi George, no. Counsel Flaherty?
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn?
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
No.
Counsel O'Malley, no. And once again, Counsel Campbell?
Oh, and the Madam Chair, Emma, yes.
Yes. Counsel Wu is yes. Docket 0105 has passed, accepting the committee report ought to be denied without prejudice.
Thank you. Docket 0105 has passed. We'll now move on to docket 0251. Counsel Wu accepts acceptance of the committee report, recommending that the order ought to be denied without prejudice. We'll take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0251, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George?
No.
Counsel Sabi George, no. Counsel Flaherty?
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn?
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
No.
Counsel O'Malley, no. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
God bless you.
God bless you. Docket number 0251 has passed.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Docket 0251 has been passed. The committee report has been accepted. We'll move on to docket 0253. Counsel Wu seeks acceptance of the committee report, recommending that the order ought to be denied without prejudice. All those, well, no, we're not going to do the voice, we're going to do the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counselor Baker, no. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George?
No.
Counselor Sabi George, no. Counselor Flaherty?
No.
Counselor Flaherty, no. Counselor Flynn?
No.
Counselor Flynn, no. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley? Counselor O'Malley, you're muted.
I'm sorry, my screen froze. Did you call me, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Counselor O'Malley?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Wu, oh, Counselor O'Malley, no, I'm sorry. Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Campbell? Docket number 0253 has passed.
Thank you so much.
Warning the upton.
Madam Clerk, docket 0253 has been passed, and the committee report has been accepted. We'll now move on to matters recently heard for possible action. If you could please read docket 0803 through 0836.
Docket 0803, constable bonds of the following, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received and approved under the usual terms and conditions. Ruth Baez, Paul Bartlett, Leonard Brown, Christopher Kastagna, Gavin Kastagna, Rolflin Kazo, Rico Damas, Mark Evelo Giadis, Kimberly Freeman-Hodge, Colin Harrell, Carl Jean Louis, Michael Jones, Stephen Jones, Anthony Keller, Earlene Lee, Daniel Long, Verinda Maldon, Burton Malvasky, Paul Morelli, Jonas Moroz, Matthew Morrison, Shams Petit Mantra, Fillmore Philip, William Rockt, Rosaleen Torres, Wellesley Williams, and Stephen M. Wilson Jr. Docket number 0818, constable bonds of Petit Mantra Duncan's, Michael James and Vincent James have been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received and approved under the usual terms and conditions. Docket number 0836, the constable bonds of Ron Cobb, Helen Borgella, Mieka Brown, William Joyce, William Joyce, Norman Lowe, Asa Montgomery, and Anslum Nawonk, whoa, I'm sorry, Nawonk, whoa, have been duly approved and the collective treasurer received and approved under the usual terms and conditions. And that is not a, we do have two names that are the same. It's father and son, just so you don't think it was a typo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. These dockets were recently heard at a committee hearing. This was, the matters were actually, the matters responded by Mayor Walsh and referred to the committee on June 17th, June 24th, and July respectfully. And a public hearing was held on Monday, August 17th. And we had Neil Jimowiski, who is from the Inspeccional Services Department, I S D, testify on behalf of the administration. And in terms of, I'll do a quick summary of what took place. So all three dockets are surety bonds received from and paid by the constables. And like I said earlier, all of these folks go through a process by which they are reviewed by a police department. They go through a background check, and they have to, of course, pass that. They then have to pay $5,000 in a bond, which is a statutory requirement codified by the City of Boston's Code 2-7.2 as part of their appointment process. Constables request applications from the police department. They must include at least five character references, including one from an attorney at law. And applications are typically accepted through February 15th of each calendar year. Following the clearance of a background check performed by the police department, the constable is then responsible for obtaining a surety bond. Constables serve civil process in the City of Boston. I know it came up whether or not they can do criminal matters, they cannot. And they also work for our city departments. So for example, all housing inspectors in the City of Boston are required to be constables. And so they may serve, so they may serve sanitary code and other building violations. Or some of them, in addition, own their own civil service business. At this time, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend that all three dockets be approved under the usual terms and conditions. Oh, take your time, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We're going to take each.
Thank you, colleagues who participated as well.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. We'll vote on each docket separately, beginning with docket 0803. Counselor Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report, recommending that docket 0803 ought to be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? The ayes have it, and docket 0803 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0818. Counselor Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report, recommending that docket 0818 ought to be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and docket 0818 has been passed. Counselor Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report, recommending that docket 0836 ought to be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, docket 0836 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0858?
Thank you. Docket 0858, message and order authorizes the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $3,828,317 in the form of a grant to the FY21 Public Safety Answering Points Support and Incentive Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department for fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This docket was originally referred to the council and the committee on July 29th. A public hearing was held on Monday, August 17th. And Deputy Superintendent Carmen Curry and Christopher Makounis, who is the Director of Quality Assurance, testified on behalf of the administration. Docket 0858, it's an annual formular grant. We get this every year, and it is specifically for the 911 Public Safety Answering Points in the City of Boston. It's a pass-through grant, so it is awarded through the state's 911 department and to all municipalities who maintain a 911 center. The state actually increased our allotment, given the busy activity of the department, this year by $500,000 with the purpose of helping to create the cost of providing enhanced 911 services in the City of Boston. They spoke to this grant in detail, but they also specifically talked about it, how it funds salary positions and reimbursements for employees in our 911 operations center, as well as equipment, and now, of course, other cleaning and contractual services that we maintain with not only through the Boston Police Headquarters, but through our fire alarm system and our EMS 911 center system. At this time, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend that we, that we accept the committee report and pass docket 05858. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for attending and all of my colleagues who attended as well.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell seeks acceptance of the report and passage of docket 0858. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and docket 0858 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets 0218 through, and 0587?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0218, order for hearing to discuss ways to support tenants facing eviction and displacement. Docket 0587, order for hearing regarding the creation of temporary rental assistance to support residents impacted by COVID-19. And docket number 0840.
I'm just going to read those two dockets?
Okay.
That's okay?
Sure.
So at this time, the chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We had a hearing on August 18th, the actual day that the eviction moratorium was set to expire. Luckily, that it has not been extended to August, excuse me, October 17th. That hearing, we wanted to get some updates on how the rental assistance program was going and what preparations the city was making in the hopefully unlikely event that the eviction moratorium is not extended. We learned that 5,600 people were prescreened into the lottery. However, only 1,200 applications have been returned, and only 567 people have actually received funding for rental assistance. This is not without incredible amount of efforts from the Office of Housing Stability, Greater Boston Legal Services, NOAA, and Metro Housing, who are doing everything they can to literally build a bicycle and ride it at the same time in the middle of a pandemic. And I wanted to, again, thank all of them for coming, wanting to work with us, and wanting to do everything they could to make sure the $8 million that they have, about $6 million left, can be allocated as swiftly as possible to people. I'm confirmed with Tim Davis that on the actual date of October 17th, with the way the spending is going and additional funding potentially coming in on October 17th, the day the moratorium is set to expire, the city will probably have about $9.7 million to hopefully stave off some eviction crisis. In addition, the city has prepared forms with Greater Boston Legal Services to give to tenants that can use in court and out of court in their negotiation. We're going to be walked through a lot of resources, and I committed to my colleagues to gather every single resource discussed, including resources for homeowners, including legal clinic schedules, all to be gathered into one email. I'm still waiting on a couple responses to give out to all of us so that we in turn can organize within our districts and, of course, at large, to make sure every single person living in Boston has, knows that their city is working extremely hard for them. I want to thank all my colleagues for coming. And I also want to thank the co-sponsor, the lead sponsor of 0218, who is Counselor Flynn, who has been a stalwart leader also in housing.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. Docket 0218 and 0587 will remain in the Committee of Housing and Community Development. We'll now move on to docket 0840. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 0840, order for hearing regarding police contracts as policy documents.
Wonderful. And this, this, I believe, is GovOps? No, this is, um. Ways and Means, I'm sorry. Kinsey, the chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach?
Thank you, Madam President. Due to a scheduling issue for some of our panelists, this hearing was actually postponed to September 8th at 3:00 p.m., the day after Labor Day. So we look forward to having colleagues join us then. Thank you, Madam President.
Wonderful. So Tuesday, September 8th, 3 o'clock?
Yes.
Be assumed. Wonderful. Now we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 929?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing regarding discrimination in the metro Boston rental housing market.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would note that this is offered in the, with full knowledge of the integrity in this country and in this city, racial discrimination in housing, redlining, blockbusting, and now gentrification. In June, on June 27th, 2020 of this year, the Housing Discrimination Testing Program at Suffolk University Law School, the Analysis Group, and the Boston Foundation released a study that was called Qualified Renters Need Not Apply. That study found that 86%, 86% of testers that used a voucher faced discrimination, and 48% of black renters were only able to visit an apartment compared to 80% for their white counterparts. Real estate professionals are key gatekeepers and are actively perpetuating discrimination in the housing market. The study included several recommendations to reduce voucher and racial discrimination. It included prohibiting charging of broker-free tenants, increasing penalties and training for real estate professionals, strengthening anti-discrimination laws and fair housing enforcement, and improving the system for using vouchers. This is a hearing to both look at all of those options and see in which ways the city can move forward in strengthening these protections and ensuring that this kind of racial discrimination that is frankly embarrassing and grotesque for this city of this size and for a city that is trying to tackle racist public health crisis, that we put all options on the table, that we discuss how we're going to address them as a city, and that we move forward following this hearing. So there's just, so I look forward to this hearing, and I ask that be assigned to the appropriate committees that we hold that here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Arroyo. At this time, if there are folks who want to speak, happy to recognize blue hands. And I see you, Counselor Edwards. Just want to remind folks that we do have a council lunch scheduled after this meeting, and I'm asking all of us to keep our remarks very brief. The chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is indeed an important issue. I just wanted to make a point of clarification, and through you to the, to the sponsor. There were two hearing orders, both assigned to the Committee on Housing that I chair. One that dealt with the discrimination and potentially coming up with an alternative testing plan for the City of Boston, and the other dealing with Section 8 and discrimination, and in both citing the studies that you just cited. So curious, Counsel Arroyo, would you want to potentially combine with one of those and also have the hearing and conversation? Or please clarify for me, what's the difference? And also, again, I would think it would also still belong in housing, in the Committee of Housing.
Certainly. So I know there are one of those, which I believe is the one that has Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Bach, and I believe Counselor Sabi George, I believe is the third lead sponsor on that one. That one, I believe, deals with income discrimination. It doesn't, it doesn't actually cite in any point within the actual docket that I saw, the hearing order that I saw, racial discrimination. But I'm not aware of the other one, and so I'm not certain whether or not that includes racial discrimination. I'm not, I have no problem either combining the two or holding the hearing on the same day.
I believe it was, the lead sponsor may have been Counsel O'Malley on the, on the other one. So maybe Counsel O'Malley can speak to it. Sorry, sorry, Madam President.
No worries. Thank you. And it's just important that, you know, our legislative cycle is 12 months, January to December, and that we not be duplative. It's so important to have this discussion. The chair recognizes Counsel Sabi George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think Counsel O'Malley will also speak to this. Counsel Arroyo's hearing as presented today is very much, I think, a combination of the two hearings that were filed at our last council hearing, one that I filed and one that Counsel O'Malley filed, both in, both of those in partnership with Counsel Bach and Counsel Edwards. So they, I think there's a lot of overlap and a lot of similarities that, you know, either merging the three of them. I think the two of us were hoping to have our two hearings at the same time because they were similar, slightly different but similar. Counsel Arroyo's third hearing order is, I think, a combination of those, of the two that were previously filed. I'd also ask, if I could, that everyone just mute themselves because there's been a tremendous amount of feedback over the course of today's hearing, meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam President. And just to sort of clarify what Counsel Arroyo has. The docket that Counselors Edwards, Bach, and I put forth, I believe in the July meeting, early July, absolutely talked about the racial discrimination, the incredible staggering statistic, but also believable statistic that was cited in that Suffolk report that came out in late June. So we absolutely talked about discrimination based on ability to pay or being a voucher holder, but obviously the fact that black and brown Bostonians were discriminated at such a high rate. So it was, it was absolutely talking about both the racial equity piece as well as the discrimination based on voucher holders. So happy to all work together. I think we're all rowing in the same direction, and all want the same thing, and look forward to having a hearing shortly.
Yes, and thank you for that. And to clarify with my colleagues, that was at the last meeting, I recall. It was right after that report came out, yes? I remember having discussion. Wonderful. Just important moving forward to make sure that we are coordinating more on the front end so that we're not taking time in the meeting. end so that we're not taking time in the meetings to have this discussion, to make sure if there is an existing hearing order, that we can address the issues in that existing hearing order and not create a new one. Great discussion here. It sounds like we need to plan and make sure that these hearings are happening, if not all together, certainly back to back. Docket 0929 is being referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development so that we can make sure that that happens. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0930?
Docket 0930, Counsel Wu offered the following audit for hearing regarding implementing a Boston Green New Deal and Just Recovery.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to be brief, I am grateful to the many organizations and advocates and activists who have helped give feedback over the last almost year and a half into, I think it was a 49-page plan around a Boston Green New Deal and Just Recovery. The idea is that even just at municipal level, there's so much that can be done. We have to focus on city power and also think about how intersectional the issue of climate justice is. It's housing justice, it's transportation, it's small business, it is stormwater resiliency, and on and on and on. And so this is most fundamentally about the fact that no particular policy program or office or individual can do this. It's really about a mass public conversation and community mobilization and prioritization of what projects should happen, where, when, what the details are. So looking forward to kicking off the legislative side with this hearing order. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Counsel Wu. And before we get into discussion here, I'm mindful that we did not add names to the last docket, so I will go back, but let's finish with this docket. Not seeing anyone looking to speak to this. Anyone looking to add their name to this particular docket? Madam Clerk, we are on docket 0930 and if you could please add Counsel Bach, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Braden, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Arroyo, and please add the chair. And that is docket 0930. It will be referred to the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. I would like for us to go back to docket 0929. This is not to discuss, but just a show of hands of who would like to add their name. This is the hearing order that we were just discussing on discrimination in the housing market. Show of hands, Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu, Counselor Braden, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards. Please also add the chair. Counsel Bach, you on that one?
Sorry, yes, please add me.
Okay, and please add Counsel Bach. That is docket 02, uh, 0929, which has already been assigned to committee. So now we will move on to docket, oh, know what I'm going to do? I'm going to turn the chair over. This is for docket 0931. I am a sponsor on this, the lead sponsor. I will turn the chair over to the vice chair, Counselor O'Malley. Vice President O'Malley, you have the floor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0931 into the record?
Docket 0931, Counselors Janey and Arroyo offer the following audit for hearing, review the city, the city's Melina Cass Mass Ave 2.0 plan in light of COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the council president. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley and all my colleagues. I want to start by thanking my colleague and friend, Counselor Arroyo, for joining me, joining me on this hearing order. He's the Chair of Public Health and this certainly is a, is a public health crisis in our city and across our nation. And that's looking at the opioid crisis, specifically with this hearing order, looking at Melina Cass 2.0. People recall the city released this back in October 2019 and a lot has happened since then. So it makes sense that we would want to take a look at this. Since the release back in October, we've seen COVID-19 devastate our city and has exacerbated the existing inequities that this council has been working so hard to, to fight against. And that, you know, stems from structural racism and the economic injustices that we were seeing pre-COVID-19. You know, I know my colleagues, Counsel Baker and Counsel Flynn experienced this, you know, being Roxbury, Dorchester is kind of the epicenter of where we are experiencing this crisis in the city of Boston in terms of what we see visibly, in terms of quality of life issues. We know though that addiction knows no neighborhood bounds and that people all across our city are struggling with substance abuse disorder and that we need to make sure that our response is, is equitable, that it is empathetic, and that we are ensuring that people who need treatment and shelter are getting that. Roxbury and South End, however, have, have borne much of the burden in terms of this crisis. And since Operation Clean Sweep last year and the release of Melina Cass 2.0, things seem to be getting worse, I guess depending on where you're looking. Certainly in, in my parts of, of the district, looking at Melina Cass and Washington Street, we, you know, see tent, tent encampments that, that weren't there previously prior to 2.0 being released back in October. And we need to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, again, to ensure that people who need treatment and shelter get that, but also addressing the quality of life issues, not just for residents, but for business owners that are hurting, hurting, particularly as businesses are trying to reopen. This is especially true in New Byn square, an area that is already vulnerable. You know, it's largely a community of color and already vulnerable. So we must move with a sense of urgency. We've got to address these issues and we can't afford to continue to compound the trauma by, by not dealing with this. So it's important that we have a timely hearing and I just want to again thank my colleagues, Counselor Flynn, for leading the walk in the South End last week. I know that Counsel Baker was there, Counsel Mahia was there, State Representative John Santiago was there, and hoping that we can have a joint approach as we continue to deal with this issue throughout our city. I want to thank Counsel Arroyo again for partnering, partnering with me on this, tackling this very important issue. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair now recognizes the District 5 Counselor. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I'll keep it short because I believe President Janey already said much of what I was going to say. The reality is that this has been an onslaught for the city of Boston. COVID-19 has clearly made it worse in terms of the ability to reach out with program, the ability to have programming that is still accessible and available and working with, useful work. I'm in deep hope that we can reach out in a way that's potentially rooted in their humanity and not in criminalizing their poverty or their illness and ensuring that we're creating pathways to stability for them as individuals moving forward because these are folks that are hurting and in these times hurting even more than they were previously. So I look forward to this hearing and I look forward to coming together to create solutions to a very hard and difficult problem for the city.
Thank you, Counsel Royo. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks to the makers. I look forward to having a discussion on the plan and afford members of the public the opportunity to hear the update from, from city officials, particularly the residents that live in the area as well as the, the business owners so they can share their concerns, their questions, and their experiences during the hearing. My team receives a lot of calls and emails from this area from both residency and businesses and even from non-residents. I know that Counsel Flynn and Counsel Baker have organized many walking tours over the years on behalf of the council with our colleagues, residents, members of ISD and the Police Department so that we could, in, in public health, so we can hear directly from the residents as to what they're experiencing and also from those that are, you know, are occupied in space in the streets and the alleyways and behind the buildings to find out what it is that we can do to help them with their addiction needs. As part of the hearing, I'm also interested in learning the status of the Long Island Bridge specifically as well as progress towards the steps that are outlined in the 2.0 plan. So place is a disaster and this neighborhood in particular has endured a lot over the years and we need to bring some relief to the residents and the businesses over there. We also need to identify the root of these issues, but also provide very necessary treatment and recovery for these individuals. So thank you and look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
I thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you to the makers, Counsel President, Counsel President Janey and Counsel Arroyo. As a member of the Mass and Cass Task Force, I'm excited to get moving on this hearing. I think that there is certainly a lot of work that's been underway. Myself and a number of colleagues have spent countless hours and days over the last few years in the Mass and Cass area, not just discussing the Mass and Cass area, and working with our colleagues in the administration to make sure that resources are available to individuals, both living in our shelters and utilizing a number of the resources in sort of the Mass and Cass region, which does sort of vibrate out from sort of the central intersection of Mass Ave and Melina Cass. There is a tremendous amount of work happening right now with individuals who are in the encampments, especially work as it relates to the, the prevention of spreading COVID-19. We certainly can and should do more and I think that a hearing on this will, will reveal some of the work that's been underway and the desperate need for more support from our state and federal partners to provide long-term recovery, both longer-term recovery beds and services for individuals struggling with substance use disorders and mental health issues and housing needs. We certainly need to continue building a humane, public, public health-centric and equitable approach to this work and realize that there are a number of components at play here, not just homelessness, which we see an increase of individuals on our streets by several hundred. We've got about 400 to 600 additional individuals who are staying on this, on the street and unsheltered during this time because it's the warmer months and the impacts that the pandemic and COVID-19 have had on our ability and an individual's ability to access shelter. We also recognize that there are a number of shelters statewide who have shuttered their doors during this time, during the pandemic. Instead of offering services, they've shut down and not responded to the needs of individuals from their community and that, their communities, and that has added a tremendous amount of burden and pressure to our system here in the city of Boston. So I, I hope to be included in the scheduling of that hearing because I've played a leading role in a lot of the work and conversation and dialogue, but direct efforts around making sure individuals, unsheltered individuals in our city, especially in the Mass and Cass area, have access to the resources they need, both around the housing, the substance use disorder issues, and their quality of life. The impact on the quality of life, no doubt, is on our residents, is on our business owners, is on the employees of the many institutions that are in the Mass and Cass area and the, and the neighborhoods that surround into Dorchester, into Roxbury, into South Boston, into downtown. So for sure, a lot of work to do. Look forward to being a partner in that work and please add my name, Mr. Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma, thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Anissa Sabi George as co-sponsor. I think I neglected, but please add Counsel Michael Flaherty as a co-sponsor. And the chair now recognizes the district counsel from South Boston. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you to Counsel Janey and Counsel Arroyo for sponsoring this important hearing order. I had the opportunity to be on Mass Ave in Worcester Square last week with, with several of my colleagues, Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Wu, representatives from the mayor's office and Deputy Stratton from the Boston Police, among others. And, you know, prior, prior to this, during the debate about the shutdown of the, of the Long Island Bridge, I was a probation officer for 10 years and visited Long Island to see my probation is there. And one of the best decisions I think Mayor Walsh has made, although it's controversial, but I think the, the best decisions he ever made was shutting down that bridge because it desperately needed to be shut down. I visited there, as I mentioned, at least once a week and I, I wasn't surprised about, you know, that it, that it didn't fall into the ocean. That's how bad the bridge was. But that was a huge setback. I know it's in litigation right now between Boston and the city of Quincy, but once that bridge is rebuilt, I think we'll get some relief. But in the meantime, this is also about the quality of life for residents in and around the South End area, Roxbury, Dorchester, South Boston. What happens on Mass, Massachusetts Avenue, Albany Street, Southampton Street has an impact on every neighborhood in the city of Boston, whether you're in West Roxbury or Beacon Hill or Back Bay. It's having a devastating impact throughout the downtown Bos, downtown Boston area as well. But what I also know is that the people that are working on this plan are doing the best job that they possibly can. They are working hard, they're dedicated, they're compassionate, they know we have a serious problem there, but they are dedicated to continuing to work with residents and I think, and with city residents, but also with elected officials. I think we all as a group have to be more involved in, in this, in what goes on in Mass Ave, even if we don't necessarily represent the, represent the neighborhood. It's about the city and I know we'll come together to make progress in this area, but it takes everybody working together. This isn't a political decision, but it's a decision about working together, making sure the residents, that their quality of life is respected. And also the police play a critical role in this neighborhood as well. Walking along Massachusetts Avenue with the residents of Worcester Square or Blackstone Square, Blackstone Franklin, Peters Park, I see the level of respect that the South End residents have for the Boston police. They know that the police are a partner and play a critical role in what happens in Boston's neighborhoods on quality of life issues and on public safety issues. Again, thank you to the sponsors, Counselor Janey and Counsel Arroyo as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn as a co-sponsor. If any colleagues would wish to continue any discussion, please indicate by raising your blue hand. Not seeing any of you would like to add your name as a co-sponsor, please raise your physical hand. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Bach. Please add the chair as a co-sponsor as well, Counselor Edwards as well. And seeing our hands, docket number 0931 shall be referred to the Committee on Public Health. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0932 into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0932, Counsel Janey offered the following audit for hearing regarding preservation of murals and public art.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the council president. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. When I was growing up in Boston in the 1970s and 80s, and I grew up in Roxbury and spent a lot of time in the South End, there were murals everywhere, public art, beautiful murals. Many of the murals that I saw really were affirming what it meant to be a little Black girl and to see these murals, they were just an important part of my childhood. It was an important part of what it meant to, to live in the community that I lived in. In recent weeks, many of you may be aware that there was a big uproar over the demolition of a, a building that was slated for demolition, but on this building, there was a mural, the Roxbury Love mural, with Nelson Mandela. And this mural means a lot to me, not just because I'm the District 7 City Counselor, but that mural is literally around the corner from where I live. That mural was at the bus stop that I have to wait at every morning. And so I share the, the concerns that people have raised around that mural now being gone and what that mural meant symbolically. It was a mural of Nelson Mandela and it had the words Roxbury Love and the colors red, black, and green and yellow. And, you know, it was symbolic. It was always meant to be a temporary mural. It was put on a building that was falling down, it was slated for demolition and to be rebuilt. But I think there was an opportunity that was missed. But I think there was an opportunity that was missed. This particular building was a city-owned building, and the team that got this project is a black-owned team with deep roots in the community and lots of good, strong relationships. But there was still a missed opportunity in terms of how we communicate what was happening with this mural in this building. There was a missed opportunity in terms of residents being able to come and say goodbye to the mural, take pictures of the mural. And so, one of the things that I was thinking about doing last year when I was Chair of the Arts Committee and had great conversations with the Commissioner and others in the city about how we preserve art, public art, particularly our murals. We're very fortunate in this time, right now, to see a resurgence of public art, particularly in the mural space. People may be familiar with the Breathing Life series that pro-black Rob Gibbs has been doing, largely in Roxbury and Dorchester, but really all over the city. The latest is the little girl with the Afro puffs at Madison Park High School with the basketball jersey that says Roxbury. And we see these beautiful murals coming up, breathing life at a time when many of us can't breathe. But how do we preserve them for the future? If we're just putting up murals, and maybe they'll be here 10 years, maybe they won't. How do we really preserve? So, this hearing order is asking that we come together to build upon the city's existing art preservation and figure out a real plan for mural preservation and other public art. I'm hoping that we can have a hearing in the near future and that my colleagues will join for this really important conversation. I think it's particularly important as we continue to struggle around mental health and how we respond to COVID and the national awakening and reckoning around race in our country, that we find the joy and create the joy whenever we can. And I see that in public art, and I want us to be more intentional around how we preserve that public art. So, I'm hoping that we can have a hearing in the near future and that folks will join that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Austin-Brighton. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Vice President, sorry. O'Malley. I'd like to add my name in support of this hearing order. I come from Austin-Brighton, and we have a rich heritage of public art in the form of murals across our district. Sadly, as in Roxbury, we are seeing the disappearance of some of that public art as due to development in our neighborhood. When I travel to Philadelphia or San Francisco, I love walking around and looking at the public art, and it really is such a wonderful, vibrant expression of the community that lives in that place. So, I really support Council President Janey's hearing order on this and hope that we can preserve and encourage the development of more public art in our city, across all of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Braden as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Councilor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President. And I just wanted to just quickly, I'm going to be brief because we're trying to finish the situation here, but I just want to just thank Councilor Janey for bringing this into the space, into this conversation, because I do, everything that she talked about resonates for me. And I saw a lot of people on social media really disturbed and distraught by this. And so, the fact that we're going to have a hearing to talk about the process and how we go about doing business in the city of Boston, specifically on how we elevate art and preserve it, is near and dear to me. And I'm just so grateful, Councilor Janey, that you are taking the lead on this and here for all of it. So, please add my name, and let me know what else I can do to help amplify this work. Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you, Councilor Mahia. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Mahia as a co-sponsor. Any further discussion on docket 0932? Seeing none, if any other counselors would wish to add their name, please indicate by raising their hand. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Flynn. Please add Councilor Wu. Please add Councilor Flaherty. Please add Councilor Sabi George. Please add Councilor Edwards. Please add Councilor Arroyo. Please add Councilor Campbell. Please add Councilor Bach. Please add the Chair's name. And docket is seeing no further. Councilor Mahia, we got you earlier, but please add, make sure Councilor Mahia is on it. Please refer docket 0932 to the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. I neglected to mention that when I was a civilian, before I became a counselor, there was a community engagement process on this particular project. There was a lot of engagement, and the team, crews, did commit at that time to preserving the mural and reincorporating it into the design. And they have identified the original artist and are going to work with the original artist on that new site. I forgot to mention that, and many people don't know that because, again, there was no process. So, thank you again. We will now move on to docket 0932. I mean, 0933, Madam Clerk. Could you please read 0933?
Docket 0933, Councilors Edwards and Flaherty offered the following order for hearing regarding community healing and trust-building after child sexual abuse.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Councilor Edwards. Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank my co-sponsor, especially Councilman Flaherty, for his historical knowledge and understanding. And I just had to bring that up because we both have been approached by a constituent at different times who, whose child was targeted, I should say, by a community member. And recently, that community, that perpetrator, was taken from a Level 2 to a Level 1, and it really re-triggered a lot of the trauma she had as a mother. And we were trying to figure out together what could we do. And what I also realized is I didn't know who really to refer her to, but it was bigger than her. And what most people need to understand, it's bigger than the child or their immediate family. When cases of this, whether it's a priest or a police officer, a coach, a neighbor, it is, the injury is not just to the individuals, it's to the entire community, and it reverberates for generations. And there are a lot of Me Too people who are very silent, who have never come forward, and that kind of injury becomes generational trauma. And so, this hearing is not to talk about what's wrong, but talk about collectively the resources the city of Boston has for collective healing when that kind of mistrust happens by a community leader. I'd love to know, how do we gather people together? In this instance, with my constituent, there was a huge meeting. Manino was there. It was a huge, big deal. But how do you deal after that big meeting? How do you deal with the fear, the concern, the paranoia that you would have as a parent? It's, what I find frustrating is the folks who are the perpetrators, they have a process to move on with their lives. You could be a Level 3, you could be a Level 2, you could be a Level 1, and you could petition yourself to the court to ask to be demoted in your level because you have demonstrated whatever. There's a process for them to move on, and I want to know what our process is for our survivors to be able to move on and for communities to be able to continue to heal. That's what this hearing order is about. So, I look forward to that conversation, and I wanted to turn it over to my co-sponsor.
Thank you so much, Councilor Edwards. The Chair recognizes Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Councilor Edwards for partnering and for recognizing my efforts in this space over the years, not only as a member of this council, but also as a former Assistant District Attorney. Child sexual abuse is a serious issue in our city and in our Commonwealth, and it's enormously important that victims of child sexual abuse receive appropriate resources and care. And I know there are a lot of support services available to victims, their families, and the community at large, and many community organizations that provide incredible services for victims. We need to make sure that those services are continuous. This hearing is an opportunity to lift up those voices who've either directly or indirectly experienced such horrific acts and to lift up the great work of the organizations that provide support to the survivors. As mentioned in the hearing order, there is a process by which sex offenders can petition the courts to change their level on the sex offender registry, and that's through paying their debt to society and not reoffending. So, going into this discussion with our eyes wide open. However, the trauma that the victims of sexual abuse in, and sexual abuse more broadly is long-lasting and severe. So, there is no legislative or legal process by which the victims can entirely resolve their trauma. So, and, you know, and while not directly related, it deeply troubles me to hear about the second Level 3 sex offender being bailed out by the Massachusetts Bail Fund. While the issue of cash bail and dangerousness is a completely separate issue, and it's deserving of its own conversation and possibly a hearing before the council, I cannot stress enough how deeply damaging and traumatizing the decision to bail out dangerous predators back into the community may be for victims of sexual abuse. So, how we support and treat our victims, both within the criminal justice system and outside the system, should reflect the level of trauma that the victims and their family and friends and their community endure as a result. So, this body has led on the issues related to child sex abuse as well as treatment in the past. I look forward to partnering with Councilor Edwards and all of you to have a robust discussion about the services available to our victims and a continuous service, quite frankly, continuous service to our victims and how we, as a city council, can play a role in advancing and improving these services moving forward. So, I appreciate the partnership and look forward for an expanded hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Councilman Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Councilor Campbell. Councilor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank Councilors Edwards and Flaherty for your leadership here. Councilor Flynn and I, of course, have been focusing on the issue of sexual assault, domestic violence, and child abuse. And specifically, the child abuse piece has been really difficult and extremely challenging to discuss, particularly because of the data and information out there that suggest how awful it may be in certain communities. And it's often, it's often not talked about. And so, when we held our hearing on this issue, people were really happy that we included that topic because typically, it's sexual assault, domestic violence, and not the child abuse piece. But one of the things we are not focusing on, why I'm so excited and really happy for you guys, or grateful to you guys for including it here, is the healing piece that you just mentioned, Councilor Edwards and Councilman Flaherty. We are focusing on the process itself, what you have to do or what it takes in order to seek justice and how you navigate that, often being re-traumatized by the system. So, I really appreciate the lens of healing, not only for the individual and for the family, but also for the community. So, thank you both for your leadership here. And, Madam President, please add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Councilor Sabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the makers for putting this before us. I look forward to the hearing. I do want to note and uplift just for perhaps part of the conversation as it's something I'm doing around my work in education, is because all of our young people now, many of our, you know, if you're of school age, you now have access to technology. We've given 30,000 Chromebooks out. Kids are on devices. Young people are on devices and often not monitored. And it has increased both the opportunity for sexual abuse and sexual exploitation. It has increased and created greater access. Technology has increased greater access to revictimize a perpetrator, to revictimize a victim, to seek out victims. So, technology certainly plays a significant role, especially as our world has changed, as we now interact with one another in very different ways. So, I think that this compounds, technology compounds the injury and the opportunity to injure. So, if we could include that, I'm happy to discuss this with both of the makers because I think it's an important part as we think about our role in protecting children especially. But also recognizing, Councilor Campbell just echoed this, but I do appreciate the awareness and the recognition that certainly the victim needs to be defended for our work, but the impact and the injury to community at large is a truly important one to note. And the way that we best help victims heal is that we recognize it as a community, as a larger community, and support one another through it. So, please add my name. I endorse this wholeheartedly and hope to be a part of the conversation in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Sabi George. Anyone else looking to add their name? Show of physical hands, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Councilor Flynn, Councilor Braden, Councilor Arroyo. You already have Councilor Sabi George, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Mahia, Councilor Bach, Councilor Campbell, please also add the Chair. Docket 0933, will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. We'll now move on to docket 0934. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0934, Councilors Edwards and Wu offered the following order for hearing regarding increasing transportation options for bicycles on the MBTA Blue Line.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Edwards. Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm very excited to introduce this. It's one of the great examples of constituents bringing issues to their counselor and then us amplifying it here in our, in City Hall, via Zoom, but still in City Hall. This is something that, if you live in East Boston, one of the biggest frustrations is that if you own a bike, you can't bike to work if you live downtown. You must either get, figure out a way to get it on or off the T in off-peak hours, which is usually not the time that you're working, or you really don't ride your bike into Boston, and you better either live and work only in East Boston or you live north of East Boston, or work north of East Boston. That's a frustration that I think, when we're dealing with increased traffic, and we've seen exponential increases in traffic in East Boston coming through our local roads to get into the, to downtown in cars, when you're seeing the T is actually cheaper than, excuse me, it's more expensive to ride the T than it is to go through the tunnel on the tolls. When we're seeing our infrastructure seems to be building for more cars, this is a response to that, saying we can do better. At the end of the day, this is, we're asking to, for a pilot program that would allow for one car on the Blue Line to be dedicated to bikes. We'd love to see how that could work for a temporary amount of time and allow for folks to commute and stay in that car. We don't, I don't expect there to be a huge infrastructure retrofitting, simply just have one car at the very end of the line dedicated for cyclists. They can come in, stand, and then get off, very likely at Aquarium, where they would take the elevator and then commute via bike for the rest of their commute. This is a creative, I think, well, practical response to the fact that people want to be able to bike downtown. I think it gets cars off the road, and I think we need to be thinking about how, other ways And I think we need to be thinking about how, other ways in which we're going to be building infrastructure for cyclists. You know, at the end of the day, this is a frustration I've heard from more than one constituent. And I think this is a practical response. So I'm excited about having the hearing with the MBTA to discuss how we can do this. I also wanted to note Suffolk Downs, which will be the single largest private development in Boston's history, is building a massive bike infrastructure. And at the end of the day, all that infrastructure to increase the amount of people to bike will end at Maverick because then either they're going to get in a car or they're going to hopefully will have a ferry or some other way because you simply can't bike downtown from East Boston. So hopefully, we will match that infrastructure buildup for that newest part of our neighborhood, newest part of Boston, and make ourselves more green and more efficient. So looking forward to this hearing.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank Counselor Edwards for her leadership. I have been frustrated by this very issue many times. The tee does not allow bikes on the subway trains during rush hour at all. And so even when the cars are completely empty during certain times of the day, it's impossible to, as Counselor Edwards was saying, have that connection, especially in East Boston where geography is that barrier, but all throughout the city. So the last mile problem, as transportation planners call it, in terms of how to get from wherever the subway or public transit stop ends back to your home or your job or where you're trying to go, that can be the holdup for increasing ridership. So this will really unlock the ability for our public transit system to truly be a public good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other people looking to speak, show a physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Royo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bach. Please also add the Chair. Docket 0934 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll now move on to docket 0935.
Docket 0935, sorry. Docket 0935, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing on pest control and illegal dumping in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I add Counselor Braden as a co-sponsor, please?
Yes, seeing and hearing, no objections. Counselor Braden has been added.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, there have been increased reports, as we all know, about rodent infestation and activities in recent months in the city, in almost all neighborhoods. And we have had neighbors reach out to us who are seeking, who are letting us know about an uptick in pest activities. The CDC has also warned that environmental health and rodent control agencies should expect reports of unusual or aggressive rodent behavior due to restaurants and other food sources for rats and rodents closing down during the COVID-19 pandemic. We should also talk about illegal dumping when discussing rodent control as trash that is not properly disposed of can attract rodents and cause other public health issues. And there are frequent reports of illegal dumping in our neighborhoods. So I'm filing this hearing order today with Counselor Braden to discuss ways that the city can adequately handle these issues, including increasing enforcement, more public awareness, outreach about proper ways of disposing trash and preventing rodent activities. It's important that we discuss measures for effective pest control in keeping our streets clean. I look forward to this discussion. Pest control and illegal dumping is a public health crisis. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you also to Counselor Flynn for bringing this important matter forward. You may know or you may not know that Alston, one of my neighborhoods, is also known as Rat City. We have a very prevalent and perennial problem with rat, rodent infestation, and it is getting worse by the week. And we have very frequent calls from our constituents. It's extremely distressing. It is a public health risk and concern. And I look forward to working with Counselor Flynn on this hearing to raise up these issues and hopefully come up with some workable solutions that will help address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Braden. Would anyone like to add their name to this docket? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Royo, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0935 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. We'll now move on to docket 0936. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 0936, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss issues relating to water and sewer infrastructure in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, water and sewer pipes are critical in maintaining the sanitation, public safety, quality of life for our residents in all of our neighborhoods. It's important that we ensure the maintenance and integrity of this infrastructure. The city of Boston is one of the oldest cities in the country, and its water and sewer system began construction in the mid-1800s. As the city underwent a development boom in recent years and more buildings are added to the water and sewer system, we need to think about how this can impact our existing water and sewer pipes and not overwhelm these pipes. When pipes rupture, it not only causes a flood, but it can also affect the wood pilings that support the foundations of many buildings and neighborhoods built on filled land. As any leakage can decrease the groundwater level that submerges these wood pilings and cause them to rot and impact the buildings on top. This particularly impacts neighborhoods like the South End, Back Bay, Downtown, Fenway, and Chinatown. Moreover, there are private alleys and sewers in the city where property owners are responsible for the maintenance and repairs of pipes, which can be costly and adding difficulty to the maintenance of our water and sewer system. I believe these are important quality of life issues that impact the public health and safety of our neighborhoods. We had a pipe rupture recently in the South End at the height of this pandemic, and it caused a lot of hardship for residents and businesses in the area. We should do what we can to prevent that from happening again. I hope this hearing will be a good discussion on the measures that we can take to ensure the safety and maintenance of our water and sewer pipes. And I'd also like to highlight the incredible work that our Boston Water and Sewer employees do every day and every night for us. They work hard, they're professional, they're almost unsung heroes in this city. They do their job, they're not looking for any credit, but they play a critical role in our city. And I'm glad to work closely with them on many issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Wu, I see your blue hand raised. Did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to quickly commend the maker and ask that my name be added to this very important issue. I've been grateful to work alongside him on this. I also wanted to note, I was having video issues on the last docket, 0935. So at the appropriate time, would love to move for reconsideration to add my name as a co-sponsor as well to that one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Wu. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to commend the maker and your leadership, Counselor Flynn. I also echo your praise of the Boston Water and Sewage, what they've done, especially in a moment where in 100 years project in East Boston. And that has both drummed up a lot of frustration with the way the roads at every, every single turn, there seems to be, you know, someone digging someplace. And then also with the rats as well, I wanted to echo your also frustration and what you're seeing even in East Boston. I did want to say, though, one thing I hope this committee and this conversation will have is discussing notice and how, and better coordination. You know, at one point, I think we had the Boston Water and Sewer Verizon, another utility, and there was like three or four National Grid, all three or four or five, all at the same time. And there seemed to be no conductor of that kind of necessary work. And so what that meant is we were told to, you know, on one-way streets to go down the runway to be blocked between two utility, I got blocked. And so on both ends of the street, I came down, I couldn't get out. And that was just due to lack of coordination. So I think that we could, we could make sure that we have that to be part of the conversation. Also wanted to bring up the Groundwater Trust, Counselor Flynn, and your incredible work there. They too are also part of this infrastructure and making sure that our, literally our city stays afloat. So I wanted to also, I hope that they're also part of this conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President, and just want to commend the maker on this, add my name. Also commend, I think, Counselor Braden as the co-sponsor for bringing this before us. I also would ask, as Ms. Counselor Wu did, for reconsideration, to amend the record and to add my name to docket number 0935. So if you would add to both, that would be great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And the Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam President. Would like to add my name, obviously recognizing that Boston has an aging infrastructure, folks over at Boston Water and Sewer, they drew a tremendous draw, particularly Henry Vitale and his team over there. I find him to be one of the most responsive public servants in my time as a member of the city council. So any day of the week, any hour of the day, you have a water and sewer issue, Henry and or someone on his team, it's back to you immediately, which allows us to get right back to our constituents with sort of real-time data and updating as to what's going on in their street or in their neighborhood. So invaluable to have someone like Henry running the Boston Water and Sewer. So just please add my name and look forward to the hearing and appreciate the maker's efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Just wanted to echo Counselor Edwards' points on coordination. We see the same thing in the district. But also, I have many Boston Water and Sewer employees that live in my district who do incredible work. And one of the things I think is often overlooked is their health. There's been some incredible and sudden losses within that department that often probably don't get any attention whatsoever. So they absolutely work incredibly hard. And maybe at some point, Counselor Flynn, we could add that to this conversation. Not only, of course, the importance of our infrastructure, but the work they do and some, just some severe concerns around their health. So please do add my name, Madam President. And thank you again, Counselor Flynn, for bringing forward the hearing order.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will add names. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, and Counselor Bach, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Braden. Wonderful. And this is docket 0936, which is being referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services.
Do you want to be added?
Oh, yes. Thank you so much. I really do want to be added. Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Flynn, for this. This is really important. If we could just take a moment to go back to docket 0935, Madam Clerk? Like to add Counselor Wu and Counselor Asabi George to docket 0935. All right. Now we will move on to docket 0937. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0937, Counselor Asabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding libraries and library staff in the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. While we're a long way from having BPS students in a typical library class, it is still incredibly important that we continue to think about the long-term needs of our schools and our students. Our librarians and library parists have been active members of our school communities during this pandemic, delivering books to our students and creating virtual reading groups and storytimes. Our library staff have been doing incredible work, often with few resources or resources they create themselves. If we are ever to have an equitable school system, one component will certainly include equitable access to libraries, library staff, and books and learning materials that are culturally, linguistically, and developmentally appropriate for all of our students. Currently, not even half of our schools have access to an in-school library or library staff, and there is a huge discrepancy between library resources within the schools that do have them. We need to fix this, like we needed to have a school nurse in every building. One of the major fallouts from this pandemic will be learning loss, particularly for our youngest students who are learning to read now and developing their foundation for formal lifelong learning. We need to provide significantly more resources to our libraries and library staff so that our students are literate. Our library staff do incredible work with our teachers to ensure that library lessons and classroom curriculum are connected to each other. We need to see our library staff and libraries as a critical, as the critical resource they are. I look forward to holding this hearing and helping BPS to determine what they need from the city and the city council to make sure that our students have access to libraries. You know, one of my comments at the end of our budget process and supporting the budget that was before us and the education budget in particular, was that it often indicated where some of those gaps were. And one of those components, as nurses have been, as mental health providers and social workers have been, libraries play, and librarians and library resources play a significant role in our students' school experience and their ability to have lifelong success and be lifelong learners. So I look forward to this hearing at some point in the fall, recognizing that it's a critical need for our kids, but also recognizing that we may have a few other things to do between now and the start of school in September. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the maker and appreciate, and kudos to her, to all of her work in this space. And please add my name. I was able to work closely with our library techs at the start of the pandemic and get a front row seat and learn the role that they played in helping our schools move forward to remote learning. So absolutely agree that librarians are extremely important to our school's ecosystem and look forward to a discussion and continued advocacy for all of our librarians to find ways to get our children back to libraries in some capacity. May even want to think outside the box a little bit, as I've been dealing with Boston's year 13, looking at pods, learning pods, things like that, to try to engage folks where they're at out in the neighborhood. So stay tuned with respect to that, but look forward to the next day of the hearing. And please add my name and thanks to the maker.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to commend the maker. I remember that when I worked for the maker back in the day, I was astonished to find in my first budget cycle just how uneven our library resources are across our schools. And as a kid who certainly spent a bunch of time in the library in my school, I think that, I think that space for imagination and for kind of self-directed and semi-staff-directed, right? Like a librarian kind of nudging you towards a particular bookshelf or whatever, that type of intellectual exploration is really important for kids. I also, when I used to help out at the Josiah Quincy Middle School, you know, there was a little bookroom and that was where, when a kid was going to have reading help, where they'd come and do it. I just think there's something really important about that idea of a kind of hideaway, a place for quiet and a life of the mind, and then to explore it with people who, like librarians, who can kind of point you in the right direction. And so I just, it feels very important to me as we talk about equity in our schools that we make libraries accessible to all of our kids. And I think it is time for a new strategic plan on this front from BPS. I know that's something that came up in our, in our conversation. So mindful as the maker said, that that's not necessarily the first priority for, you know, the coming month. But I do think that it's something that we should be on a runway up towards. So thank you so much. Please add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President Council Jamie, and Counselor Asabi George for bringing this to the forefront. I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, for far too long in the Boston Public Schools, we've continued to strip away our classes in schools of librarians. And so while I understand, you know, how important it is to have this conversation, I also just want to be really clear that I would love to see this more of a long-term conversation where we're really looking at how do we restore the, you know, our librarians into our public schools. I think that that's a very important part of the conversation. And I also think that we have an opportunity to be innovative during this time and that there are a lot of librarians who are unassigned at this point because they've lost their jobs through the Boston Public Schools, and there's been lots of layoffs. And I think that we can seize this moment outside of this public hearing, but just in general. So how do we, how do we create opportunities to bring librarians back into, into the space? So I just wanted to add that piece there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, if anyone would like to add their name, they can please indicate by physical hand. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor Royo. I think you have Counselor Bach, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell. Please also add the Chair. Is that Counselor Ed, wait, Counselor Edwards, yeah. All right. Thank you so much. And very important issue, so thank you to the maker. Shout out tomorrow, too, at the Mather School. I've gone to that school to read to those children several times, not as a counselor, but as a, just a community person. Docket 0937 will be referred to the Committee on Public Education. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0938.
Thank you. Docket 0938, Counselor Mejia offered the following order for hearing discussing youth involvement in regards to police reform.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. O'Toole. She is definitely out there in the trenches, taking care of our kids out in the Mather's. So thank you, Madam President. I'm really excited to present this hearing. I'm really excited to present this hearing order today because it's one of two that were written by, entirely by our Youth Civic Engagement Fellows. This summer, we partnered up with Madison Park Development and worked with our policy team and, oh my goodness, and, and learning about conducting research, learning about their local elected officials, and eventually writing a hearing order on a topic that they are passionate about. This particular hearing order-
Checking in on you, Nicole, and sorry to reach out to-
Excuse me. Okay. We're good. Counsel Mahia, please continue. A reminder to my colleagues to please mute themselves. Counsel Mahia, please continue.
That's not my flow.
Nope, you're good. Sorry about that. That was a colleague who wasn't on mute.
Okay, so basically, this particular hearing order was written by Jada, who is actually going to be moving out for her freshman year at Penn State. And she wrote this hearing order about the need to include young people in the conversation around police reform. And I want to read a little bit about, a little bit of the speech that she wrote for me. "As a city council, we know our limitations. We sometimes don't have as much power as we'd like, but as I have said in other speeches, there's only one place where we will always have an unlimited of power, and that is the voices of the people. And among those voices are the youth. Youth voices have gone unheard for far long enough. They are an important factor in our community's need for change, especially along the lines of police reform. I have always believed that young people are the ones that are going to lead our community into a better future. But how will they do that if they're never, if they're never given a chance? And I think right now is the best time to include them in this important conversation." When I was a kid, people always told us that we would be the leaders of tomorrow. In our office, we believe that young people need to be front and center as the leaders of today. We are incredibly proud of Jada and her accomplishments, and we cannot wait to have this hearing order specifically addressing the need to include young people in all discussions that deal with police reform. So big ups to Jada for writing this hearing order, and we're looking forward to getting it assigned and being led by young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counselor O'Roeo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards. Please also add the Chair. This docket, docket 0938, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. We'll move on to docket 0939. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0939. Counsel Mahia offers the following order for hearing addressing the relationship between school lunches and the achievement gap.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia.
Okay, my turn again. Well, so first of all, I just, this is also another hearing order that was reproduced by the young people who are working this summer with us. So thank you again, Madam President. This one was actually written by Sam, who, this is from his own lived experiences. Sam talked about how he never eats food that's provided at his school. He normally would pop over to the pizza shop down the street and spend his money there. What stood out to us is that it's not just about how Sam talked about the food provided to him, but how he connected to how he feels in class. And so I wanted to read a little bit about his speech that he prepared for me today. So this is so incredible because these are young people who are living their realities, and they wrote these speeches for me. And I'm so incredibly humbled to be able to, to utilize my platform to uplift their voices. So as a mother of a 10-year-old, I think it's inappropriate to, it's appropriate to say that I understand the struggle that parents face, not just within Boston, but within the United States as a whole. I understand that as parents, we can go as far as to work for ourselves to the bone to keep our children rested and ready for school and the days to come. Without a good lunch, students are left starving their bodies and their minds. We can't just say, this is how it is. Sam has been a fantastic addition to our team this summer and has done an amazing work in keeping us engaged in what is going on when it comes to school lunches. We are so proud of all the young people that worked with us this summer, and we cannot wait to see what they will do when they move on. And so this particular hearing order hopes to look at the intersection of food insecurity, even when we're being fed oftentimes the food that is accessible. The lunch is usually, as for those folks who went to the Boston Public Schools, you know, the lunch is not something that most people, young people would eat. And so we end up spending a lot of our money outside just to be able to nourish ourselves. So I think we have an opportunity to look at the connection of food and the achievement gap, because if young people are not fully nourished, they're not going to be able to participate and fully access the curriculum. So we're hoping that this hearing order will look at the intersection of these two. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? This is docket 0939. Madam Clerk, if we could please add Counsel Flynn, Counselor O'Roeo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Edwards. Please also add the Chair. And docket 0939 will be referred to the Committee on Education, and we'll now move on to docket
Docket 0940. Counsel Mahia offers the following order for hearing addressing sexual assault in Boston Public Schools.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, are you with us? Counsel Mahia?
Can you see me and hear me?
We can hear you, and now we can see you as well. This is docket 0940, in order for a hearing addressing sexual assault in Boston Public Schools.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam President. During our hearing on the role of school police, we heard from countless young people speaking out about their experiences with sexual assault. One student from East Boston in particular said, "Many of us are already experiencing sexual assault, pedophilia, domestic abuse, substance abuse, violence in our streets, parental loss, and the fear of immigration or incarceration." She went on to add that policing in the schools add to the trauma. "A study by the CDC found that 33% of women will experience sexual violence between the ages of 11 and 17. In the city of Boston, we are responsible for over 54,000 students, and it is crucial that we commit to the work of ensuring that our schools are safe spaces for our students." In writing this hearing order, I had the opportunity to get feedback from Maureen Golson, the Deputy Director of ABCD. She actually gave me my first job in the public health space after I graduated from college. So we are incredibly grateful to have been able to work alongside her on this. One thing that she pointed out was that I want, that I want to uplift is that the assault is the assault to prison pipeline. Too often, survivors of sexual assault are punished for not showing up to school or for doing poorly in class. After a while, their academic punishment becomes criminal punishment. We need to dismantle this notion of the model quote-unquote survivor if we want to be able to move this work forward. We are really excited for this opportunity to uplift this issue and hope that we can come out of this hearing with some real viable solutions that we can work with. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Show of hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counselor O'Roeo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, and please also add the Chair. And the Chair. Counsel Bach, were you adding your name? Okay, Counsel Edwards? Yes, add Counsel Edwards, and please add Counselor Bach. Thank you so much. Docket 0940 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. We'll now move on to docket 0941. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0941. Counselors Bach and O'Malley offer the following order for hearing regarding zoning relief for 100% affordable and deeply affordable projects.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the council's been discussing over the past few months, COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic has really just accentuated a problem that we already had in Boston with a real lack of affordable housing, and especially deeply affordable housing for so many of our lowest-income residents and our most vulnerable residents, our seniors, our disabled folks, our families who don't earn very much money. There's just a real lack of that housing, and it forces people out of our city. And we, and we know that as we look at the potential impacts of this pandemic with things like evictions that hit our Black Brown and immigrant families disproportionately, that, you know, we're going to face a short-term crisis, and we've been trying to put things in place to deal with it. And, and I hope that we will put many more at this level and the state and federal level. But from a long-term perspective, what we need is more deeply affordable housing throughout the city. And, and Boston sometimes can suffer from the same challenge that we see all over the state and frankly, in communities around the country, where affordable housing gets held up, delayed, and sometimes nixed intently through the zoning process. And I think philosophically, the important thing to understand here is that what can be a real imbalance in our, in our processes around developments like this is that, is that when you have a place that people have been excluded from, then they're not there at the table to be part of the conversation about why they need a home in that community. And so our good faith efforts to include the people who are most proximate doesn't actually include the people sometimes who are most proximate to the problem, which is their lack of housing. And so I think that's something structural and fundamental, and it's the reason why I've been so glad to be working with Counselor Edwards on a zoning amendment to, and with the marriage team on a zoning amendment to affirmatively further fair housing. This proposal here today was sort of spurred by a specific project in JP, which I want to allow my colleague Counselor O'Malley to speak to in greater depth. But I will just say that I think actually that project is a great example of the community really coming to support a project that's deeply affordable, 100% affordable housing. It's one that I was pleased, when I was working at the Boston Housing Authority, that we could find a way to support that level of deep affordability of supportive housing for formerly homeless folks. And, and that type of thing should move forward, and we can fight these one at a time, or we can say, hey, the only way we're going to ever address this at a systems level is if we make it a little bit easier for us to get these projects that provide these critical homes to people going and approved. And so, you know, a number of different cities around the country, including Cambridge just across the river, have looked at different ways of doing this. And so I think there are some good models to learn from and build off of, and I think it's time for Boston to have this conversation. So I'm grateful to my co-sponsor, Counselor O'Malley, and looking forward to having a hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And first off, it goes without saying, my deep appreciation for the leadership and partnership with Counsel Bach in partnering on this. There's no surprise, or ought not to be a surprise to anybody, that we're at the point where half of renters in Boston are classified as rent burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And we also are know far too well that the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic have worsened housing stability, as thousands of Boston residents are now at risk. We all know that there's more than 50,000 families waiting on BHA housing, and specific thousands upon thousands of those on waitlists for CDC housings throughout the city, in Alston Brighton, in East Boston, Madison Park, and on and on and on. And we all know that it's imperative that we vastly and quickly increase our stock of deeply affordable housing units. But in order for us to get there, we need strategic, comprehensive zoning relief so that it's easier to build deeply this kind of housing. This is a time that demands creative solutions and ideas about affordability. Many of the approaches that are being piloted in other cities across the country attempt to provide carrots rather than sticks. And the goal here is to make affordable development easy and attractive to developers, as well as standardizing, standardizing the process so that there's less friction and less reinventing of the wheel and duplicative processes over and over again. We need not only dramatically increase our supply to realign our housing market, but we can also do affordability more intelligently by incorporating mixed income developments, urban design best practices, prioritizing transit-oriented development, and on and on and on. The purpose of this hearing is to explore further many of these ideas that are currently being put into practice throughout the United States. But more than that, it's to have a conversation about why we're in this situation to begin with. The preceding speaker, the lead sponsor on this, Counsel Bach, mentioned that there is an issue in my district. It's, it's, I was gobsmacked, although perhaps I shouldn't have been, when there was a lawsuit filed against a project that was as positive a development project as I've seen in my nearly 10 years in office. This is Pine Street Inn, a national leader, certainly a, 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 a institution in Boston that has done yeoman's work for generations, is seeking to build a large-scale development to offer housing to formerly unhoused individuals. They put forward one of the most comprehensive and open and aggressive community processes I have witnessed. It was supported across the board. Of course, there were one or two voices, but even, even those were brought on board eventually. And because of the way that our system works, there was one individual who I don't believe lives in the neighborhood, but certainly owns a building in the neighborhood that abuts this project, that's able to grind the entire project to a halt. As I said, it's not only a frivolous lawsuit, it is a needlessly cruel lawsuit. And while we all support the community process, perhaps to different, different extents, and we obviously all support, you know, the right of a butler to use every level of, of power that he or she can use, it seems that when you have situations like this, a project that makes sense, that has gone through the process, that has found incredible support, and is going to support 100% deeply, deeply affordable housing, and is now being put on hold indefinitely, it is going to exacerbate the problem of housing that we've been dealing with and will only get worse as we, God willing, recover from this pandemic. So this hearing is incredibly timely. It's incredibly important. I've had many conversations with Counsel Bach and Counsel Edwards and so many other housing experts on this body, so I really think there's an opportunity here for us to lead and to put some meaningful and effective legislation policies in place to deal with the fact that, that we need to be more nimble and more aggressive as it relates to building and supporting deeply affordable housing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Mahia, Counselor O'Roeo, Counselor Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0941 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll now move on to docket 0942.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0942-
Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. Could you please-
Do you want me to read them all together?
Yeah, so 0942 through 0944.
Great, thank you. Docket 0942, offered by Counsel Asabi George, offers the following order for approving: Petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the disability pension of Ryan Lanane. Docket number 0943, Counsel Asabi George, offers the following order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the disability pension of Harry Jean. And docket number 0944, Counsel Asabi George, offers the following order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the disability pension for Terry Cotton.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. Back in May, we had a hearing on a related docket, and because of that hearing, we learned that the previously filed home loan petition needed to be separated into several dockets and refiled so that we could have a proper hearing to discuss the retirement status of several Boston police officers shot in the line of duty, working to protect our residents in our city. These officers are Ryan Lanane, Terry Cotton, and Harry Jean. I'd like to thank Counselor Edwards for her work during the hearing and since assisting me in preparing for this proper refile, as well as Counsel Flaherty for the added information and education around, around proper procedure. I look forward to moving on with these dockets soon and appreciate everyone's indulgence. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Is anyone looking to add their names to these dockets? Thank you so much. Is anyone looking to add their names to these dockets? Oh, well, I will keep track. So, let's see. We've got Councilor Flynn. Show of physical hands, please. Bach, Campbell, Mejia, O'Malley. Wonderful. Madam Clerk, for the, and you guys, just to clarify, these are three dockets. They're all similar in nature, different individuals. You guys are comfortable with your names on all three dockets. For these three dockets?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilor Mejia, you have the floor?
Yes, I'm, what am I?
So, right now, we are entertaining.
Don't put my name on those.
Okay, so there are three dockets for everyone.
Okay, so.
Councilor Asabi George just spoke to these three dockets. These are dockets 0942, 0943, 0944. They're all related, but they're separate because they're individual police officer, they're separate police officers, and we're looking at their status, their retirement status. These are officers that were shot. Remember earlier in the year, Councilor Asabi George just explained, we had a hearing, we had to separate them out. So, now these dockets are separated out. They're three dockets. What we're doing now is to see who wants to add their names to these three dockets, okay? Everyone good with where we are? And since there was that confusion, we'll start again with a show of physical hands to add your name to these three dockets, okay? Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Flynn. Please add Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Bach, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Braden. Dockets, these three dockets, dockets 0942, 0943, 0944 will be assigned to the Committee of Government Operations. Good? At this time, I'd like to turn the chair over to the Vice President. Councilor O'Malley, you have the chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0945, or place docket 0945 before the body? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0945, Councilors Campbell and Janey offer the following ordinance, amending Chapter 12.9 of the City of Boston Code, ordinances regarding human rights.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the District Councilman, Madam Pan. Councilor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. At this time, I would like to move for substituted language. There were two changes that we made in the original version that was filed, and everyone should have received it in their email from central staff. It includes an edited first paragraph. The purpose is still the same. It's just some language changes, and it also included some additional, an additional note at the bottom of the definition section. And so, just wanted to flag those and ask formally for substitution of language.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. It is before the body, substitution of language of docket 0945. Seeing no objection, the language has been substituted, and please proceed, Councilor Campbell.
Thank you. I am proud to introduce this ordinance today with our Council President, Councilor Janey, to establish protections against unlawful credit discrimination in employment practices in the city of Boston. I first want to thank our Council President for her partnership on this legislation, and I have to give a shout out to Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, who actually partnered with me on this back in 2016, when she was still on the council. This issue was first brought to me by, brought to my attention by my District IV residents, and to folk, and by folks who work with my residents, who found that residents seeking employment were facing barriers. And one of those barriers was their credit report or their consumer report being used against them in the employment process. Credit checks have proven to be a barrier to employment for an individual's burden with student loans, medical bills, or those who have been involved in the criminal justice system. This legislation would make it unlawful in a discriminatory, an unlawful discriminatory practice for an employer to seek, procure, or use credit information regarding an employee or an applicant in connection with hiring, discharge, promotion, discipline, or any other condition of employment. This is indeed an issue of economic empowerment and opportunity. There is no evidence that one's credit history is determinative of one's success as an employee. However, credit history can be a significant barrier to someone obtaining a job, especially for Black and Latino people, who are more likely to report bad credit, which they often attribute to debt from medical bills. By eliminating this barrier, this legislation makes access to employment opportunities more equitable and seeks to close the profound racial gap here in the city of Boston. Eleven states have passed similar laws restricting the use of credit checks in employment practices at the state level, including California, Connecticut, and Colorado. And large cities like New York, Chicago, and Philadelphia have passed similar laws at the municipal level, where their states have yet to do so. A 2016 Harvard Kennedy School study found that low credit score census tracts in states that did ban credit checks in employment practices experienced a 2% to 3% greater, experienced 2% to 3% greater employment after implementing the ban compared to low credit tracts in states without this ban. This legislation is even more urgent and important now due to the devastating economic impacts and financial hardship residents in Boston are experiencing due to COVID-19. Thousands of Bostonians have lost their jobs or had to leave to take care of loved ones, have fallen behind on rent and mortgage payments, are burdened with emergency medical bills, and the list goes on. All things that will hurts ones, that will hurt one's credit, but should not hurt one's ability to get a job. I look forward to holding a hearing on this ordinance very soon, and of course, working with all of you to earn your support of this ordinance. Thank you again, and thank you again to my co-sponsor, Councilor Janey.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. The chair now recognizes the Council President. Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I'm really proud to partner with my sister-in-service, Councilor Campbell, on this issue, and want to thank her, as well as Congresswoman Pressley, for her leadership on this issue. Credit checks have proven to be a barrier to employment for individuals burdened with student loans, medical bills, or those who have been involved in the criminal justice system. And this heavily impacts low-income workers, workers of color, in our city of Boston. And as we grapple with the financial impact brought on by COVID-19 and the pre-existing systemic inequities in our system, in our city, it's important that we ban employers from using credit checks. It's more important than ever before. As people return to work, as we are digging out of our own kind of economic downturn, and there's more downturn to come, the more that we can get people back to work, the better. And we need to make sure that they can do so without being discriminated against because of bad credit. And so, just to keep the comments brief, I'm hopeful that we will have a hearing soon and that we will be able to move forward on this, because it is very much tied to our agenda of creating a more equitable Boston for the residents here in our great city. So, thank you again, and thank you for your partnership, Councilor Campbell. Looking forward to having this important discussion and moving this forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Would anyone else wish to speak on this docket? Not seeing any blue hands. Would any other counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Councilors Bach, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Wu, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name. Would anyone else wish to add their name? Okay, docket 0945 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. We will now move on to docket 0946. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0946, Councilor Arroyo offered the following resolution in support of extending the 2020 Census reporting deadline by one month in order to ensure a fair and complete count during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo.
Thank you, Madam President. As of last week, Boston has a response rate of 54%, ranking at 304 out of Massachusetts, 351 towns and cities. We fall short of the state and national response rate of about 65.7% and 63.5% respectively. The U.S. Census Bureau recently declared that the deadline to complete field data collection and self-response submission is September 30th, 2020, despite their indication in April that they would need until October 31st, 2020, to ensure every person in the U.S. was counted as a result of the major setbacks of the COVID pandemic. The ongoing COVID pandemic has created serious delays in field data collection, which is an essential tool for the Census Bureau to hard to count populations, which Boston has many of. The new 2020 Census deadline increases the risk of leaving out many people of color, immigrants, homeless individuals, and other historically undercounted groups, denying us and them the funding they need for essential services, especially during the ongoing pandemic. We have a hearing this Friday at 9:00 a.m. that's going to discuss the impact COVID has had and strategies that we have to overcome those challenges. But I believe an important step that we can take today as a council is asking the U.S. Census Bureau to use that original month that they proposed back in April and actually move their deadline from September 30th to October 31st, because it's appropriate and it makes sense. If we're actually trying to count folks and do the things that we need to do and do right by our communities, there's really no way in which moving the count proposal from October 31st to September 30th serves the purposes that the U.S. Census Bureau should be actually intending to keep. And so, that's what this resolution is, and I ask for your support in a unanimous, hopefully, decision by the council to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Arroyo. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to have my name added. Also, Madam President, on the Census, 2020 Census, the role of Sebastian Zabakter, who's Mayor Walsh's liaison on the Census, I've had the opportunity to work with him probably at least 10 or 11 different forums over the last several months. But he's very informative and knows the topic well, and would be, would be glad to work with any of our colleagues if they wanted to host a meeting with various neighborhood or civic organizations. I do find that it's very effective to engage the neighborhood organizations so that they can educate and let their residents know as well. So, I just wanted to highlight the role of Sebastian in the work he is doing to make sure that every person is counted in the 2020 Census. Thank you, Madam President, and again, I'd please add my name.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to, anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Braden, Councilor Mejia, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Bach, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Wu, please also add the Chair, and Councilor Flaherty, please also add the Chair. And docket 0946, oh, wait, Councilor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules. Do we have everyone's name? I was going to assign this to committee. Councilor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0946. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0946 has been adopted. We will now move on to docket 0947. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 0947, Councilors Asabi George and Arroyo offer the following resolution in support of the United States Postal Service and the American Postal Workers Union.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Councilor Asabi George. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor Arroyo, for cosponsoring this. As a nation, we have a constitutional obligation to provide for free postal service. The USPS has been a critical way we have furthered democracy in the incomplete project that is the United States. Despite the daily and historical importance of the agency, the USPS has come under continuous privatization efforts for decades. Now, we have also experienced the president and postmaster general attempting to further dismantle the United States Postal Service ahead of the election. Because of the outcry this summer in support of the USPS, the postmaster general has stopped removing the high-capacity mail sorting machines. Their continued removal would have been disastrous for the daily work of the USPS and for ensuring a fair election. While this is a critical policy reversal, the underlying issues at the USPS still remain. Congress needs to find a way to fully fund the USPS and correct the legislative barriers that have hamstrung the postal service's effort to be financially solvent and free from administrative political pressure. Postal service workers, who are members of the American Postal Workers Union, have been on the front lines of many national crises throughout our history. In recent memory, they were on the front lines during the post-9/11 anthrax scares, and today, they are on the front lines of COVID-19. We need to show our postal workers and the USPS more respect. I thank Councilor Arroyo for joining me on this and ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution in support of the United States Postal Service and the APWU. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to add their name to this resolution? Madam Clerk, if?
As a co-sponsor?
Oh, I am so sorry. I am, I really apologize. Before we add names, the chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo. Do you see I'm trying to move us along? We only have two hours left on, in this meeting. Don't worry, we'll get to the lunch soon.
Otherwise, our lunch will be tomorrow.
We'll get to the lunch soon. Just two more hour, two more, you know, five more pages of agenda. The chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo. I apologize.
I'll make it short. Thank you so much, Councilor Asabi George, for really seizing this and moving forward with this and your leadership on this. I would just say that we trust the USPS with some of our most important documents, whether it's pay-for-work, like passports, social securities, medicines for our family, just all kinds of things. They deliver them rain or shine, snow or pandemic. They go above and beyond every day. Since 2010, Congress has failed to provide the legislative and regulatory changes requested by each of the three postmaster generals, so this is a longstanding issue. It's only become worse now, and, you know, I hope my colleagues join us in passing this resolution in support of them receiving the critical supports that they need, as well as the appreciation that they deserve as truly essential workers who have made sure that our country continues to operate at some level of normalcy during very early shutdowns in this pandemic. They were still out here delivering mail, still out here doing things that we needed. And so, thank you to them, and I hope that we actually get them the resources that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, and my apologies. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will, I will be brief. Madam President, I also wanted to highlight what Councilor Arroyo mentioned is the, all the medicine now from the VA is mailed directly to the patients via the U.S. Postal Service. They play a critical role in making sure our veterans have the medicine that they are entitled to. And it's critical that the post office continues to play an important role in our society. Please add my name. I'd also like to highlight the great work of our congressional member, Stephen Lynch, who does tremendous work on making sure that the post office gets the resources it desperately needs. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Now, at this time, I am looking for those who would like to add their name to this resolution. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Councilor Bach, Councilor Wu, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Braden, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Flaherty, please, and I think you have Councilor Flynn, please also add the Chair. Councilors Asabi George and Arroyo seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0947. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0947 has been adopted. We'll move on to docket 0948.
Docket 0948, Councilor Asabi George offered the following resolution in support of waiving the MCAS in spring of 2021.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Asabi George.
Thank you again, Madam President. The state legislature rightly moved to cancel the MCAS this spring due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Because we are still in the midst of this pandemic, we need to give our students, teachers, and whole communities, school communities, peace of mind and cancel the MCAS again for this coming school year. I ask to suspend the rules and pass this resolution in favor of canceling the MCAS next spring. This year, MCAS will not be a learning, useful learning assessment for our students, and will have devastating impacts on our public schools. MCAS would only test privilege and access, and we know Boston has some of the highest needs, need students in the state. And without knowing sort of the academics and the curriculum our students will be, will be able to get through, it's critically important, as this is a graduation requirement for many of our students. There is now legislation to cancel the MCAS through 2024, and I do urge the state legislator to pass this bill as soon as possible. I ask today for, I do ask today that we suspend. I ask today for, I do ask today to suspend the rules and pass this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Looking for folks who would like to add their name to this resolution at this time. Show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Campbell, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Wu, please also, and Counselor Arroyo, and please also add the chair. And Counselor Edwards, thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. Did I get everyone who wants to be adding to this resolution? And Counselor Mejia, Counselor Bach. Counselor Baker, are you good? Are you adding your name?
I wanted to, if when we get to this, I want to add on a previous docket.
Sure, no worries. At this time, Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0948. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0948 has been adopted. Before we move on to docket 0949, the chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, did you want to reconsider adopting?
Thank you, Madam President. 0947 is what I wanted to sign on, if we could reflect that in the minutes.
Yes. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Baker to docket 0947. That is the resolution on the postal workers and postal doctors.
And what about 0948 on MCAS?
No, I'm good there, thank you.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to docket 0949. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0949, Counselor Asabi George offer the following resolution, recognizing August 9th through the 15th as National Community Health Center Week.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to take a moment to honor the work that our community health centers across Boston and across the nation do to keep us all healthy and thriving. Last week was the National Community Health Center Week, and as many of you know, I deeply care for community health centers. I'm on the board of directors at the DoT House and have brought representatives from the community health centers to the council this past February. The 11 community health centers in Boston do incredible work providing preventative and primary care and now COVID testing. Our community health centers are always on the front lines, ensuring that everyone has access to health care no matter their background. I want to thank all of the staff at our community health centers who keep them running. We, as a city, are indebted to you. I ask today that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Okay, the chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counselor Campbell, do you want to speak?
Yes, yes, I'll be really brief. First of all, thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for bringing this forward. Without community health centers, many folks within my district would not have access to quality health care. I have Codman Square, Bowdoin in Geneva, Harvard Street Health Center, DoT House, Mattipan Health Centers, and if they're not in my district, they're directly outside. Critical, especially during COVID-19, so I want to thank the leadership at these health centers, as well as the workers. And again, thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for bringing this forward. And please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak? Okay. Who would like to add their name? Show of physical hands, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Baker, and please also add the chair. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0949. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0949 has been adopted. We'll now move on to docket 0950.
Docket 0950, Counselor Campbell offer the following resolution to commemorate the 55th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President, and this resolution is a little delayed with the council meeting because we celebrated this on August 6th, and there were several events across the country acknowledging and commemorating the 55th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act, which many see, and I, as well, as the most monumental social justice victory of the 20th century, culminating decades of advocacy, activism, and struggle. It not only enfranchised millions of people, but affirmed the humanity and citizenship of Black Americans, something we are sadly still doing to this day. As we all know, having the formal right to vote historically did not, and still in some places does not, ensure one's ability to exercise that right, and there are voting rights and voter suppression battles still being fought across this country. This month also marks the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment for hundreds, for women's suffrage, which we, which we know did not guarantee universal access for women to vote, especially Black women. The fight for civil rights and racial justice is alive and well today. In the 50s and 60s, it was equal rights. Now, it's racial equity and Black Lives Matter. As we continue to confront systemic racism in our institutions and push for transformative policy change, I'm extremely proud to lift up and honor the memories and hard work of so many who fought and died to secure our right to vote and to run for office and do other things connected to our advocacy in the political space. So just wanted to acknowledge all the folks who took time to plan events around this important occasion, and obviously, we're a little late on the council side, but really happy to still introduce the resolution and seeks the formal suspension of the rules and passage by all colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu, Counselor Braden, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, Counselor Baker, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia, I'm not sure what you're doing, okay, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Edwards, please also add the chair. Counselor Campbell?
Counselor Bach.
Counselor Bach? I'm so sorry that I missed. Please add Counselor Bach. I don't even see, oh, there you are. Counselor Bach, please add Counselor Bach. Counselor Campbell, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0950. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0950 has been adopted. We will now move on to docket 0951.
Docket 0951, Counselors Arroyo and Campbell offer the following resolution, recognizing August 6th, 2020, as Jamaica's 58th Independence Day.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is a recognition of our Jamaican community in the city of Boston, who do so much to make our city better. We have a number of different restaurants and businesses in my community that are owned and operated by the Jamaican diaspora, and they add so much, not just to our local economies, but to our culture, and I would be remiss if I didn't also thank them for Vice President Kamala Harris. So we're making a statement here just to say that we welcome them to our, our culture and our community, and that we're thankful so much for their impact and their ability to shape this city and this state and the country in such a positive way. So thank you.
You so much. And the chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Arroyo, for the partnership, and I echo you in thanking the Jamaican community for Vice President, soon-to-be Vice President Kamala Harris. I also wanted to thank Andrew Sharp, who does a lot of work as chairman of the Authentic Caribbean Foundation, for the event he hosted, not only to recognize Jamaican Independence Day, but also all the work he does with respect to the various countries that represent our Caribbean community, and the advocacy he does at the local and state level on their behalf. I'm proud to join our Jamaican brothers and sisters to celebrate this. Obviously, it's a little delayed, and my grandfather came from Jamaica to Roxbury, so this is near and dear to me as well. So thank you again, Counsel Arroyo, for the partnership, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you both. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, please also add the chair. Did I get every, and Counselor Edwards. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Did I get everyone? Wonderful. Counselors Arroyo and Campbell seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0951. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0951 has been adopted. We'll move on to docket 0952.
Docket 0952, Counsel Mejia offer the following resolution, recognizing September 12th, 2020, as Black Joy Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We are thrilled to be able to present this resolution today, which we worked on with the one and only Thaddeus Smiles, who is a pillar in our community and the ultimate bringer of joy. In April, the city council passed a resolution committing itself to using acid-based language when talking about communities that we seek to represent. Too often, when we talk about our lived experience, all we talk about is the doom and gloom. But what we need to remember is that Black joy is a form of resistance. We look to declare September the 12th, 2020, as Black Joy Day so that we don't forget the importance of celebrating and loving ourselves. And so with that, I want to share some uplifting facts about our community here in Boston. There are more elected of color serving on the city council now than there's ever been before. Boston is home to one of the country's longest-running public service affairs program focusing on people of color. Black Basic has been airing since 1968. Boston's Black Nativity Program has been running every year since 1970. George Walker, the first Black man to win the Pulitzer Prize in Music, premiered his award-winning work with the Boston Symphony Orchestra. Through COVID-19, we have found ways to continue to spread joy, from uplifting messages to dancing with friends and family. We found a quote that we feel sums up what we're trying to get at, and this is a quote that I think we hope that will live in your hearts. His joy is not found in the absence of pain and suffering, it exists through it. I move that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Amen. Would anyone like to add their name to this resolution? Show of physical hands, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell, did I get you? Counselor Campbell. So when you turn your cameras on, the box is shipped around, so that's what happens. I can't, I can't, I think I have everyone. Did I have everyone? Certainly, please add the chair. I would just like to co-sign on the importance of Black Joy Day in Boston and September 12th, my granddaughter's birthday, so indeed will be lots of joy and lots to celebrate then. Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0951. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, this is docket 0952.
Ew, you said that.
Okay, so Counselor Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0952. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0952 has been adopted. We'll now move on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, we could start with docket 0953, please.
Docket 0953, how to be...
Madam President, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute there. I wanted to sign on to the three more dockets if possible.
Sure. Madam Clerk, before we go on to personnel orders, Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
First of all, I apologize. I stepped away. I would like to sign on to dockets 942, 943, and 944.
Madam Clerk, are you all set with those? We're going to add Counsel Baker to those dockets?
As yes, or as supporting it?
Supporting.
Okay, so 0942.
Yeah.
Correct? 0943.
0943.
0944.
4, yes.
Great, wonderful.
Thank you. And again, I apologize.
Yes, thank you. So now, we will move on to personnel orders, and we'll begin with docket 0953.
Docket 0953, Counsel Janey for Counsel Mejia.
Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0953. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0953 has been passed.
Docket 0954, Counsel Janey for Counsel Braden.
Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0954. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, docket 0954 has been passed.
Thank you. Docket 0955, Counsel Janey offer the following.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0955. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0955 has passed.
Docket number 0956, Counsel Janey offer the following order.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0956. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0956 has passed.
Docket 0957, Counsel Janey offer the following order.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0957. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0957 has passed.
Docket 0958, Counsel Janey offer the following order.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0958. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0958 has passed.
Docket 0959, Counsel Janey offer the following.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0959. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0959 has passed. And now, I don't think there are any blue boxes, so we will move on to the green sheets. All right. My understanding is that Counsel Braden would like to remove, will pull something from the green sheet. Is that correct? Counsel Braden?
I've, yes, I've left my notes at home. I'm in this chamber, and I've left my notes at home, so.
That's, we're going to get the dockets before the body by having the clerk read them in, and it should be an email already in your inbox to all of my counselors about this docket, and you can find them, if you have the physical green sheets, on pages 20 and 21 of 28. Madam Clerk, these are dockets, 0703 through 0708. Yes, Counsel Braden, is that right?
That's my understanding, yes. I need to go check. Hang on.
I'm going to have, while you do that, Counsel Braden, the clerk is going to read these dockets so that they are properly before the body. Madam Clerk?
On page 20 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, docket 0703, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend the amount of $1,541,466 in the form of a grant for additional home-delivered meals for seniors awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. This grant will fund federal FY20 Title III-C2 CARES Act. It was referred to committee on May 20th, 2020. Also, on page 20 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, docket number 0704, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $1,56,840 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Council on Aging Formula Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs. The grant will fund the continued operations of the commission's health and housing units and related services, filed on May 20th, 2020. Also, on page 20 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women... Also, on page 20 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Docket number 0705, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $567,216.25 in the form of a grant for an additional senior meal and administrative costs awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. This grant will fund FY20 Families First Corona Response Act Title III-C. It was fired-- it was referred to committee on May 20th, 2020. Also, on page 20 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Docket number 0706, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $324,863 in the form of a grant for the federal FY20 Title III-B Supportive Services COVID-19 CARES Act awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund additional services such as homemaker and health aid to seniors in Boston, filed-- excuse me-- filed on May 20th, 2020. Referred to the committee, I'm sorry, on 2020. On page 21 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Docket number 0707, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $274,437 in the form of a grant for additional caregiver services for seniors awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund the FY Title III-B COVID-19 CARES Act. This was also referred to committee on May 20th, 2020. And on page 21 of 22, in the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Docket number 0708, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $237,863 in the form of a grant for the city of Boston administrative costs for senior program services awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund the federal FY20 Title III CARES Act Area Plan Administration. This was also referred to the committee on May 20th, 2020.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Before I call upon Counsel Braden--
Happy to.
Thank you.
In the Committee of Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Chair Counsel Braden--
Yes.
--you were separating this to the floor. Thank you. Should have explained that. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Arroyo, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Oh, yes.
Yes. This is to bring the matters to the floor.
Yeah.
Counsel Flynn.
Counsel Flynn, you're on mute?
Yep. Yes.
Great. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
And I believe Counsel Wu.
Hold on. Yes. Hi. Did I miss out on--
Or did--
No, no. This isn't your committee.
If you're on that committee, you'll get pulled. So, this is to bring these dockets from the green sheets before the body. So, now they're all before the body. The clerks read them in--
And--
--committee, and now I'm going to call upon Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a raft of dockets with significant funding to support elder services. I haven't got the complete list here. Elder services support for, especially in COVID times. Hold on, see what the list is.
You look at your green sheets, it'll help you maybe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Green sheets, here we are.
Page 20, 20 and 21.
Green sheets. The green sheet document. Page 21. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for the indulgence here. What page are we at? 20 and 21, here we are. yes, here we are. So, the first one is authorizing to expend $1,504,446 in the form of a grant for additional home-delivery meals for seniors awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through Massachusetts Executive of the Energy and administered by the Elderly Commission. This speaks for itself. This is a significant grant in support of home meal delivery services for our seniors, which is vitally important at this time. Do we take these one at a time, Madam Chair? Madam President--
We'll vote on them one at a time, but Counsel Braden, you can feel free to just speak to all of the dockets. Give us a sense of what they are, why you're pulling them, what they'll accomplish by pulling them. We'll vote on them separately.
I'm very cognizant of the fact that they've been in the green sheets since May, and I apologize for not bringing them forward in a more timely manner. The next one is Docket 0704, a message authorizing to accept and expend the amount of $1,46,840 in the form of a grant for the Council on Aging Formula Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and this is to fund the continuing operations of the commission's health and housing units and related services. Again, as we heard earlier in our deliberations today, housing for-- affordable housing, deeply affordable housing for many of our residents is really important, and I think this money would be put to good use very quickly in the Office of Elder Affairs to support housing and health units. The next one is Docket number 0705, an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $567,216.25 in the form of a grant for additional senior meals and administrative costs. It will be passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and administered by our elderly commission. Again, in this time of COVID, so many of our elders have been confined to their homes. They have been reliant on food deliveries for their food security, and I feel that we should accept this vitally important funding at this time. The next order is 0706. It's a message authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $334,860 in the form of a grant from the federal financial year Title III-B Supportive Services for COVID-19 CARES Act awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the office of-- the Executive Office of Elder Affairs from Massachusetts, and administered by our elderly commission. It's strong. And this will also provide additional funds such as homemakers and health aids for our seniors in Boston. Again, this is vitally important support for services for our seniors at this critical time. Let's see. How many more have we got here? Can we just take those four to start?
We're going to vote on them when you're just done explaining--
Keep reading. Keep reading.
If you've given us a sense of what each docket is, we'll move on and vote after that.
Yeah. Seven, Docket 0707, again, is another order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $274,437 in the form of a grant for additional caregiver services for our seniors in Boston awarded from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and administered by our elderly commission. Again, the grant from FY year Title III-E COVID-19 CARES Act. Again, the next order is 0708, a message from the mayor authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend $237,863 in the form of a grant for the city of Boston administrative costs for senior program services awarded, again, from the Health and Human Service, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and again, administered by our elderly commission. And the next order is Docket 0824, an order for here-- oh, that's another, that's another thing. We've done that already. Okay, so that's the entire orders. This, 1, 2, 3. Docket 0407--
0703 through 0708.
And from what I could hear, they're all grants, and they sound like many of them are COVID-related to help seniors and families. Is that--
That's correct, Madam President. And I actually was under the impression that some of-- that we had actually voted to suspend the rules and accept some of these already. So, I'm very happy to recommend that we accept and expend these amounts at this time.
Wonderful. So, we will take these dockets separately. If there's no discussion, we'll just go ahead. People are good. Everyone's clear. Wonderful. We're going to start with the first docket, Docket 0703. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0703. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any names? The ayes have it. Docket 0703 has been passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0704. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and Docket 0704 has been passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0705. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any names? The ayes have it, and Docket 0705 has been passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0706. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the ayes have it, and Docket 0706 has been passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0707. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and Docket 0707 has been passed. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0708. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and Docket 0708 has passed. We will now move on to announcements. A show of blue hands for anyone wishing to make an announcement. Wonderful. So, I will just take just a moment to reflect that we are, as a country, doing something really important tonight. And I'm reminded of that, you know, with the resolutions that we passed earlier, celebrating Jamaicans-- Jamaican independence, and celebrating the Voting Rights Act. So, for the first time, we will have a Black woman on the major ticket for VP, and that happens tonight. I know this is a nonpartisan body. We're not talking politics, one side or the other, but it is important that we acknowledge what we are about to do in this country. And I just point that out because I'm really proud of the work that all of-- that all of us are doing at the local level. So, thank you to my colleagues, and want to quickly thank central staff. Again, you make us look good. Certainly want to thank my own team and my summer team in particular, because at our next meeting, they will not be here. So, certainly wanted to thank the folks that have been helping out on Team Janie over the summer. So, that's Danny, Latia, that's Angel, that's Kamaya. We've had an amazing run, and looking forward to continuing this work. I also want to continue to remind folks about the census. There was a resolution. We are having a hearing on Friday. It's so important that we continue to make sure that folks have the information that they need to really fill out the forms, get them back in, get them counted, so that we can get the resources we needed. And then finally, we are having a council lunch today. I am really excited to get together with all of you guys. It's been a while. This is an opportunity for us not to just talk about some important topics in terms of the subject, but really to connect socially. So, I'm excited about that, and just wanted to remind folks that 30 minutes after this meeting, we will be moving toward the lunch. So, if there are no other announcements, we will move on. Great. So, today, we are adjourning our meeting, as we always do, in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Arroyo, Annie Kincaid. For Counselor Baker and Counselor Asabi George, Sergeant James Lehe of the Boston Police Department, and Lieutenant Brian David Darty of the Boston Fire Department. For Counselor Asabi George, Barbara Ellen Walsh Higgins. And for Counselor Flynn, Luke Ting-Wing Sau. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the four mentioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, September 16th, at 12:00 noon. For the safety of the general public and all those involved, this meeting will be held virtually and posted online. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and this council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Soon. We don't have to wait that 30 minutes.
Bye.
Guys.
Have fun.
Thank you.